The Boulder, City of Boulder, City Council Study Session of April 24, 2018. We have a couple of items on the agenda, and the first one has to do with all things about our budget. With that, I'll turn it over to...
Thanks, and I'll very briefly say hi and thank you. We're anxious to make this presentation. I think you'll be very interested in some of the data that we have. But let me turn it over to Cheryl Patelli, who is our Chief Financial Officer.
I'll do this slide. So I'm going to start off by giving a little background and also give information on our national and Colorado economy. Then Cara is going to talk about our local revenue trends specifically related to sales and use tax. And then finally, Katie will talk about the budget impact and solutions that we are looking at with our flattening of sales tax revenue. So I'll start, I think, by re-emphasizing that the city has a very strong financial position now. And I thought a good way to show this would be talking about some of the comments that we received from Standard and Poor's and Moody's in our last geo-debt rating review. And those talked about, first, our sound financial management. So this would be our financial policies and procedures that we have in place, and are we following them? And then our reserve positions. So this is something Katie's going to talk about later in the presentation. We've talked a lot about reserves the last few years because we really think it's important, and certainly so do the rating agencies. And then finally, our very strong budget flexibility. So this, it really incorporates a few things. First, reserves. So we have adequate reserves. Reserves are very important for times of uncertainty, for emergency events, and we saw that with the 2013 flood. But another component of this budget flexibility relates to how proactive are we when things change? So, for instance, six months ago, we came to you, and we thought revenues were going to look one way, and now they're looking a little different. So we've been very proactive in looking for reductions to ensure that we don't end the year in a budget deficit. So how did we get to this strong financial position? It really, 10 years ago, I thought with the Blue Ribbon Commission would be a good place to start. And the Blue Ribbon Commission looked at both our revenues and our expenditures. And at the time, they were formed because we saw that we were going to have up to $135 million gap in the general fund by 2030. And interestingly enough, they also predicted in this year, 2018, that our gap would be 50 million, which luckily, I'm here to say, is we're nowhere near 50 million gap. So we've really reduced, and actually, after our reductions, now have eliminated that gap by taking proactive steps. The reasons for the gap are the same reasons that we have budgetary issues today. So decreasing productivity of sales tax, and then above-average inflation of what we're spending our money on. So looking at the revenue steps that we've taken, we've been very strategic when we look at our taxes. So we've renewed a lot of our taxes. Our voters approved removing taper limitations on our property tax. We've had one tax increase for community, culture, and safety, and we've limited the term of that tax. And then, I think probably most importantly brought up by the Blue Ribbon Commission is this concept of ensuring that our one-time revenue is only used for one-time expenses. And Katie will get more into that as well. On the expenditure side, we've implemented priority-based budgeting. We've spent a lot of time and energy on the personnel side of things because certainly for the general fund, that makes up the majority of our budget. And we've looked at different compensation policies and strategies, as well as our performance management system. We've proactively managed our assets. The voters have approved a bond, a new tax. We also regularly perform asset assessments, so we can find out the conditions of our assets and the dollar amount it would take to keep those assets in the same condition. And I think probably, me personally, what I'm most proud about is our most recent addition of the $3.6 million added to the general fund for capital. And we are taking that capital expense out of our ongoing revenue to ensure that that program continues on moving forward. And then finally, on the expenditure sides, we continue to explore our efficient delivery of services. This is done both by our department assessments and our master plans, as well as other ways. Reserves, we certainly are on target to meet our goal of 20% general fund reserves by So that's our strong position. Now I'm going to turn to the economic climate, both domestically and here in Colorado. So nationally, we are in the ninth year of economic expansion, and this is the second-longest expansion since they've been keeping track of that sort of stuff. GDP is rising at a moderate rate, a little under 3%. And a lot of that growth is led by consumer spending and business investment. And certainly, we've seen the business investments spurred by the most recent Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. Retail sales tax are up, nationally, up around 5%. The housing market is solid, and the global economy is doing better. So for the last several years, several countries were struggling, and we're starting to see those countries do better. Just a little bit on the moderate growth, some cautionary things we're looking at is the demographic change. This is similar to what Colorado has experienced, where more of our population growth is slowing, and more people are moving into the retirement age, which of course, the spending patterns change. And then also, household savings are down, and consumer debt continues to rise. So we all know this was a big part of the Great Recession, and things are starting to turn for the worse there again. They got better after the recession. The labor market nationally is very healthy, at 4.1% unemployment. Similar to Colorado, people are, or businesses are having a really difficult time finding skilled workers. So not only is this slowing the job growth, but it's also putting pressure on wages. There's a lot of uncertainties out there. Inflation is one of them, that we, quite frankly, we haven't seen for a while. The pressure's mounting. We've seen it in the price of oil, other commodities. And so what the Federal Reserve is doing to try to fight back inflation is increasing interest rates. So we've had three rate hikes in 2017, one already in 2018, and they're expecting two more. So that's what's happening with interest rates. We've seen stock market volatility in 2018. We didn't really see a lot in '17. And throughout history, if you look at the stock market volatility along with the interest rate hikes, it generally shows a sign of a mature expansionary period. So we're getting near the end of our expansion, perhaps. The US dollar is weak. There's several policies out there that are really big question marks, such as the debt ceiling, terrorist trade wars, tax reform. Interestingly enough, it is spurring business investment, but many feel that longer term, it may come at a cost to the overall economy. And then finally, global concerns, North Korea and Russia most notably. Moving on to Colorado, very similarly, we're experiencing moderate growth, but our economic growth has been slowing the last few years. We were kind of gangbusters back in '15 and '16, and it's starting to slow down. Much of the growth has been on the front range, but more recently, the rural areas have seen some growth, and a lot of that has to do with the oil production. It's at an all-time high right now in the state. Cautionary related to Colorado itself is we're seeing consumer prices that are rising faster, are outpacing the national average. We also, the migration into the state has slowed, which many feel there's a lot of factors. Housing prices certainly can be one of those. And similar to the nation, the aging population, we also have a lot of millennials, and the spending patterns are different. Our labor market is also very healthy, at 3% unemployment, and we're having the same difficulty finding skilled workers, and the pressure's on wages. Housing market remains strong. The number of permits is outpacing the national average. But on the cautionary side, the inventory is still low, and finding construction workers has been difficult. And with that, retail sales, we're at about 5% in '17 for growth, and expected to be a little less than '18. And this is where I'm going to turn it over to Cara, who's going to dive into the sales and use tax numbers.
Hi, thank you. So first, why sales and use tax?
Can you...
Oh, yeah.
Put it a little closer.
Put it a little closer, okay. Sales and use tax is the largest revenue source for the city citywide. Is it on? Okay. You'll see, it's the blue piece of the pie in this chart, and it's 42% of general fund revenues, and it was 32% of all city revenues. So it's a significant revenue source for the city and for the general fund in particular. We also just wanted to remind that when people make retail purchases in the city, that not all of it goes to the city of Boulder, that for every retail tax dollar collected, only 44 cents goes to the city. The majority of that goes to the city general fund, 19 cents, but the rest go to these special revenue funds that have very designated purposes. And then the balance of it goes to the state RTD in Boulder County. Some more facts about sales and use tax. We just wanted to reiterate that there is this collection lag. So the current report that will be released this week, hopefully within the next day or two, will be the February report, and that's for February retail transactions paid at the register in February. Then those retailers remit that revenue to us in March, and then we collect it and process it and put the report together and report on it in April. So that will be out shortly. This analysis is largely through 2017 year-end results, but the two months of results that we do have for 2018 really have not changed the overall picture, so we still have great caution. The focus of this presentation will be on that biggest piece of that pie or donut chart, and that's the retail sales tax, because that portion of it makes up more than 80%. There are the three other types of use taxes, business use, construction use, and motor-vehicle use tax. We'll talk about two of those at the end of this part of the presentation. So this chart shows Boulder retail sales. So we are showing retail sales as opposed to tax revenue, because then this controls for the fact if you have tax rate changes. So this is just retail sales transactions. And you can see that it was steadily increasing at a nice rate until 2016, and then 2017 was basically flat. And we have decided with that and looking deep into the data, we think it's prudent to make a very flat projection for 2018 as well. So we have two charts here that are month-over-month sales tax trends. And when we say month-over-month, we mean we're comparing January of one year to January of the previous year. And that's because sales and use tax, well particularly, retail sales tax, is very seasonal. And so you always want to compare to the same month of the previous year. And so this chart, we're just showing 2013, '14, and '15. And what is interesting to note here is that month-over-month, it does move up and down. So, you know, if we say the sales tax for a year was flat, it's not that it was flat every single month. It moves up and down when compared to the previous month, or the same month of the previous year. But in 2013, '14, and '15, each of those years only had one month where the month-over-month trend was negative. But then when we look at '16 and '17, '16 had, I think, four months where there were actually negative results, and then '17 had six months.
Wait, can you explain negative results? Is that the rate of growth was negative?
Sure, yes, exactly. So February 2017, sales tax collections were more than 5% less than they were in 2016. So if you look at that February dark green bar that's going down...
So you have 2018 on here, and it's just the first two?
That's correct. So we did put, even though we haven't released that February report yet, we did put the data that we do have for February, and then we also put the results for January. And so January was a little bit less than 2% growth over the previous January. February was about 1.3% growth over the previous February. But again, those results don't give us a lot of confidence, particularly if you look back at 2017. January had more than 5% growth over the previous year, but yet we ended the year flat.
So I'm curious, why do they show sales tax always by the rate of increase as opposed to here's how much we collected, and it would be, you know, a sizable amount with a little bit, it shows you the variation relative to the whole? Why is it that we do it this way?
I think it's just like, are we growing, or are we, you know, is sales tax revenue growing or not? And so it's often reported in just that percentage change. We do have some slides later when we're looking at the industry analysis and the geographic area analysis, where we do tell you the dollar amount. And we are actually looking to make some rather substantial changes to the revenue report, because I do feel like that the format that the city's revenue report has been for years and years, I don't think it's changed in a very long time. It has really focused just on percentage changes, but we should be reporting more on those actual dollars. And so we do plan to incorporate more dollar reporting and more month-over-months sales tax analysis also. So it is interesting, and again...
Jill, do you want to speak up?
Sorry. I wondered, can you break it down into sectors and show which sectors are lagging the most?
Yes, we are going to show that in total, and then we're going to speak to four specific industries and three specific geographic areas. So this is the slide that has a lot of information. So this slide was intended to just sort of, at a glance, see, within all of the different industries, what has been the trend over time? And so I think the big picture, what you can see, and the color coding should hopefully be intuitive, that bright green is strongly positive, bright red is more strongly negative. Then in 2013, '14, if you look at it, there was a lot of green, very little bright red. And as we move to the right, we're seeing more and more industries that are bright red or slightly red, and very little of the bright green. So it's just sort of, in general, over time, we are seeing this softening across many industries. And so we will look at a few of those industries in specific detail. So the next four slides that we have are these specific industry slides. There are three pieces of sort of information on each of these slides. The top right-hand chart, that pie, shows you the blue sliver is what portion of all of retail sales is apparel. So this isn't a significant piece of the pie, but it is an industry that we've seen sort of steady decline. The second piece of information is the bar chart, and that relates to the left-side axis, and that is retail sales. So this is showing the dollars, but again, it's retail sales. And then the line chart goes with the axis on the right, and then that shows you that growth. So you'll see that 2014, we had strong positive growth. '15, it started slipping to 2%. And in '16, it was right around 0%. It was actually just slightly negative. And then in 2017, it actually fell down to 6%. So it just continued, it was slowing growth, and then it actually went to declining. And so what we've seen with apparel is 90% of apparel sales are actually in three different areas of the city, 29th Street, Boulder Valley Regional Center, and then the downtown Pearl Street area. And all three of those areas saw year-over-year declines in apparel, and some of them quite a bit. And we also saw it in a number of those places, but we'll speak to it more when we look at 29th Street, that there have been more apparel store closings than openings. So it's something to look at. We will also see on a later slide that apparel stores have been sort of declining across the United States as well. So this is actually sort of in line with what people might be seeing elsewhere. So that is one industry of concern. The next is consumer electronics. And you can see here that there's some volatility in this industry. Again, it's a very small piece of the pie, but we did decide to speak to it. For one reason, we've had a lot of questions about it, and I think possibly because of that significant decline in 2017. This industry does have some institutional sellers, so there can be large sales in one year that adds to that volatility. And then there has been, I think, a lot of competition in this industry, and possibly also some deflation in consumer electronics. Some products are actually, cost less than they did in previous years. So this is one that we'll continue to watch, but there is just some volatility in this industry. So the third is eating places, and this is actually a bright spot. It is a significant industry. If you'll see the piece of the pie on the top right. So this is, we are very sort of reliant upon a sales tax revenue from eating places. So this is, we are very sort of reliant upon a sales tax revenue from eating places. And you'll notice that the axis on the right now is all green, so that's good, that's a good sign. So we have not had declining tax revenue from eating places. It has just slowed. So it's, the slowing is something of a concern, and we'll speak to some reasons why we think that might be later. But it is a good news story. If it weren't for this strength in this industry, we would have seen sales tax more, I think sales tax revenue, retail sales tax revenue would have been negative in 2017, and it was just flat. So this is part of the good news. The other good news part of the report is general retail. And again, we, in recent years, have still positive growth. It did slow a little bit in 2017. This is a significant piece of the pie, so again, a very important industry for us to keep an eye on. We did note, some people might remark on the big decline from 2013 to 2014, and that is an anomaly that related to how recreational marijuana revenue was reported in the beginning. In 2013, it was included in this category, and then it became its own category. So that's just sort of anomalous. So if you took that data point out, it would look more, it would all be positive numbers, but it did slow a little bit in 2017. The other thing that we will talk about a little bit when we get to one of the geographic areas is one of the reasons why we think it looked like 2017 slowed, and that's really just because in 2016, some online retailers started voluntarily collecting sales tax. So that sort of explained that big increase in 2016. And then, you know, if you look at the blue bars, that's already in the base for 16, so the growth over that in 17 wouldn't be as significant. But it was pretty well publicized in the paper that some major retailers started collecting for many municipalities and for the state in 2016.
These last two illustrate to me why I think it's confusing to people, because mapping the rate of growth makes it look like, oh my god, it's, our overall sales tax is declining, at least in general retail, and it's just increasing more slowly.
Right.
Anyhow, I'm pretty certain that people do not catch that nuance. Anyhow, I'm glad that we're showing it both ways, because I do think it...
Okay, and we will work to improve the way that that's communicated, both in the monthly reports and then through the budget process. So I appreciate that comment.
I had a separate question. Do you, do you have broken out numbers on those larger retailers that did start collecting sales tax? It'd be really interesting to get a report on those specific numbers.
Well, we do. We can't report for specific retailers, because that information is confidential. We could probably report on growth from some of our, some of our retailers that we could go through and sort of call what we think are strictly online retailers. It would be a little bit of a manual process, but we can do that and try to see what the growth has been for those. And then we could also look, some of our retailers that have a physical presence, but then also have online sales, and they remit sales tax for those online sales. Sometimes they have separate licenses for the online piece versus the brick-and-mortar piece. So we can try to look at that and see what information we could provide.
If it's fairly doable, I think there's a great deal of interest in knowing how much sales tax we're getting from online retailers. So to the extent that data could be mined, I think it'd be very useful.
We will look at that.
Well, thank you.
If I can just riff on that, I sent out something from CML about what the Supreme Court's looking at in terms of online sales, and the, sort of the nuance that direct sales versus third-party sales, which kind of has a huge impact. So anyhow, to the extent that we're unpacking that, I do think that's another piece of that, at least for the Amazons out there. And I hope it's an issue that we're going to address. I know it's only a piece of the puzzle, but understanding that physical and online presence, so if you don't feel like going downtown, and instead you're going to buy from them online, versus, I'm going to buy in another state, I don't know. I think we would learn a lot from understanding how consumer habits have changed here.
We will definitely look at, into that and see what we can provide. So this table is similar to that previous one, but, sorry.
Just because you moved on without there being a chart for it. I noticed on the previous chart like this, construction use tax was one of the ones in the red. Do you have what percentage of the pie that is?
Oh, in the first. Yes, and so that, we can flip back to that chart, was it 8% I think?
Did it, did you show that? Oh, I missed it.
Not here, back more, here. So, construction use tax is 8%.
Okay, perfect.
And then, when we go to the, go to the industry table, the slide, this construction use tax here is, it's actually construction, sales, and use tax. And since right here, we're only reporting on the retail sales portion, this is not reflective of the use tax portion.
Oh, I see.
So I should have taken that use tax label off in this slide. This is construction sales tax, because we do collect...
Like on lumber?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Or plumbing fixtures, that type of thing. Like if you have a plumber come out to your house and install the toilet, and you buy the toilet from that plumber, it would probably be sales tax on that. So this, again, similar slide, we're moving a lot from, a lot of green to much more red and sort of light red or pinkish colors. So, overall, trending and seeing sort of flattening or decline in a number of industries. I will say, I did not say this on the previous slide that looked like this, is that the coloring is, takes into account both the percent change and sort of the piece of the pie. So, we did use coloring based upon how important is it in terms of total dollars, and what was the percent change? So we picked three areas to focus on for this, and the first is 29th Street. And there's, there's an additional piece of information on these slides, and that's the map of what the area is in the city. So you will see, 29th Street, it's a decent piece of the pie, there's a lot of retail 29th Street has seen sort of, it was sort of steady, then it increased, and then it's been actually decreasing the last two years. And the areas that sort of appear to be having trouble at 29th Street are apparel and general retail. Those stores, there's been more store closings than openings in those categories, and even the stores that remain, there are a few that have had real strong year-over-year growth. But the good news story for 29th Street has been eating places, and particularly fast casual has been doing well at 29th Street. We did hear recently that they are 100% leased, so I think there's been some turn in the last year, and so maybe that's an opportunity, maybe there'll be some changes there. But that is an area that we've seen some weakness. The next area is Basmar, and again, there's a map right there, so you can see that it's on either side of 36, right near baseline. And this area, it was growing, the growth was slowing, but then we did see this precipitous sort of drop in 2017, and that is largely, I think, responsible, or because of three closings, one particularly the Whole Foods, and then also Bojo's closed and Denny's closed. So those are very visible closings that we all saw, and citizens and residents all saw. So there are some vacancies there, so that may be an opportunity, but we definitely saw sales tax decline from that area of the city in 2017. And the next area we thought we'd focus on is really, if you can see that map on the right, it's really a zoom-out map. It is that light green bordered by the red, excluding those other colors in the middle. So it's nearly all of the city, except for these very specific zones that are named. A large part of that area, of course, is residential, but there is, there are pockets of retail in those all other areas of the city. When, in this category, in the monthly revenue report, it is just all other within the city. But we combined the numbers for this presentation to include Metro Denver, all other in Colorado, and out-of-state, which would be retail sales. So this sort of combines what's happening outside of the named geographic zones in the city. And so you'll see, again, that 2016 sharp increase was both online sales, and we're seeing some strength from out in these other pockets of Boulder, and then also some Metro Denver sales into Boulder that we're collecting sales tax on. But then, again, to Mayor's point, that, that sharp decline makes it look like it fell in 2017, but it didn't fall, it just is growing at a slower rate. So again, the right axis is still all positive, so we have had positive growth in this region or regions, but it did slow from 16 to 17. And again, I think that's because a lot of that online sales got into the base in 2016, and then the growth over that is just not so significant.
So, question for you, that, so I understand when you say that the all other includes online sales, right, so that, and that's a lot of that big bump there in 2016. You mentioned Metro Denver, and I don't know what you're referring to there when you say that.
So we do collect sales tax from some businesses that do not have a presence in the city, but they do have a presence in Metro Denver, and there are some stores that are remitting sales tax to us on those purchases for deliveries to the city.
Are these online?
Like you could buy furniture at a furniture store in Denver, delivered into the city, and they are collecting the sales tax for us and remitting it to us. So, looking at Colorado, this was presented at the January economic update, and Cheryl mentioned it in her part of the presentation, that for Colorado in total, the growth has been closer to 5%, and they are projecting 4.6% growth for 2018. So again, what we're seeing here in Boulder is not really reflective of what we are expecting for this state in total. So that leads to the question of why are Boulder retail sales flattening? So, there has been a lot of conjecture about this, and people are hypothesizing, as are we. And we looked at a lot of different data sets to try to help us explain what might be happening here in Boulder. And we decided, based upon that analysis, to focus on and talk about these four explanations. Competition from surrounding communities, again, online retail sales, some of which we are not collecting sales tax. Shifts in demographics, Cheryl spoke to that a little bit, and then also just sort of looking at the retail choices here in Boulder. So this map shows comparisons of the increase, again, in sales tax revenue for different cities across the front range. The blue dots are growth, Boulder is shown in gray, and we have a 0.39% figure there. That figure actually is sales tax revenue increase if you exclude audit revenue, and you exclude the additional sales tax that we have for recreational marijuana, because that's not, that only goes to the general fund, and it's not part of our base sales tax. If you include those two things, it's actually flatter, it's 0.18%. And then the yellow dots are cities that had declines. So while you do see, if you look at the blue dots, mostly the growth is quite strong, 3, 5, 8.7, more than 9%. So many of the cities across the front range enjoyed quite strong sales tax revenue growth in 2017. Lakewood had this pretty significant decline of minus 2.4%. That was largely due to the hailstorm that had the mall out of service for much of the year. And then Broomfield has a slight decline, and so I think probably that's largely due to Flat Irons. And unfortunately, I think retail preferences change, and there's been a lot of sort of press about those traditional-style malls are falling out of favor with shoppers. They like more easy in-and-out, retail choice. Some of the shopping areas around the mall, those retail pad sites have vacancies, some anchor vacancies. So, I think they're having some analysis to do there also with regard to shifting preferences.
Can I ask you a question? Go ahead, Sam.
I was just going to ask, one factor that seems to me could affect this is growth. In other words, if there's growth in the number of places people can shop, because I know Longmont's been adding commercial retail space, Frederick, Brighton, those are places that are growing. Have you looked at kind of growth rates in commercial space versus retail?
We have, in fact, on our next two slides, we have at least one representation. And that certainly is, an old adage in the development world is that retail follows rooftops. And of course, that's not the only consideration when retailers make choices about where to locate, but it certainly proves true, that the more rooftops are built, then they get to a certain tipping point, and then all the retail follows. And so I think that that definitely has been happening in our neighboring communities. So I think that is significant.
That was exactly my question, you know, in the retail world, a lot of times they'll do the same-store sale comparisons, right? In other words, you have a store, and you compare that store to itself year-over-year as opposed to the universe of stores, because as Sam pointed out, you know, Longmont's a good example. Longmont's been growing, not only residentially, but commercially, right? And so, we don't know if that 8.7% is the fact that they have 8.7% more stores as opposed to the same stores are selling more stuff.
And they've just opened, or recently, their new shopping center.
Right.
And Flat Irons has, is having subsidence issues, so they have just scraped whole areas out there that used to have stores. And safe bulldozing.
So, great that you brought up Longmont. Yeah, so we do have Longmont here, and this is a chart of their residential building permits. So you'll see, there was a lot of growth in the late 90s to the early 2000s. Everything stopped during the Great Recession, but then there was a lot of building again in the last few years. So with all those rooftops, then, in these last few years, yes, even more commercial has been built. You know, that was pretty slow through the Great Recession as well, but these last three years have been quite significant. So yes, we definitely think there is a phenomena of retail following rooftop and greater competition in those neighboring communities. So people that used to shop here are now possibly shopping in Longmont and Lewisville.
So it doesn't necessarily mean they're doing better, it just means they're doing more.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, that's a lot of, that's over a million square feet incremental, a million and a half square feet in the last three years, right, in commercial? Can you imagine if we did that in Boulder? Okay, is there any way for you guys to unbundle that on a per square, to normalize it on a per-square-foot basis?
We can look at that. We did have that question also from the Downtown Commission. So there is interest in learning more about retail dollars per square foot, and so we will look into that.
Right, because I mean, we know how many square feet commercial we have, we know what our revenues are, same thing for Longmont. Be interesting to see, are we actually selling, are we actually losing sales to Longmont, or are they just selling more stuff to whatever their catchment area is?
And I think probably both.
I think this is an interesting question, and the ramifications are what? Because in the end, they have more money, but maybe, are you just trying to figure it out for capital, or?
Well, I mean, I think that dictates our solution. In other words, if we're concerned about retail sales flattening, you know, the first question is why? And if Longmont's magic solution is, we'll just build more stores, we have to ask ourselves, do we want to build more stores? The answer to that may be no, but at least we will make an intentional decision, knowing that, it's not that our stores are bad, it's just that we don't have as many stores as they do. In other words, I think that dictates our solution. If we care about this, we have to decide, is it a quality issue or a quantity issue?
Well, it's, it's also a what issue, right? I mean, what is being sold, and at what cost to the consumer that drives a lot of it? It's like, I don't know... It's like, I don't know with this retail analysis that's supposedly happening, I wasn't in on the beginning of that, so I don't know quite what it is, but saturation, for example, how much apparel saturation is there in Boulder of a particularly high-end type that isn't going to bring people in? So there, there are questions like that as well that I would think would be included in, Bob, your.
I think you're absolutely right, Cindy, because if we see, and not, we can't control, we as a city government can't control the type of stores that come into play, we might have a little influence over that, but if, if we see a certain industry that's failing, we shouldn't push that string, we shouldn't keep pushing, you know, apparel. If, if people are buying all their clothes online, then let's just stop opening apparel stores and let's, obviously restaurants seem to be doing gangbusters, so maybe that's the thing. In other words, I think it's really important for us to know what people want and provide, provide response to those needs and those desires.
Well, and it was interesting hearing the fast casual food part in 29th Street, whereas the general retail and apparel stores are going down there again, but that, that segment of it is up.
So again, looking at what's happening in Boulder versus these other communities, we did pull a few of the industries, this is not all of them clearly, but one thing to note is Boulder is bigger, but if you do add Longmont and Lewisville together, the population is about the same. So you can see Boulder had weakness in apparel and building materials, and while we had strength in eating places, it was more moderate than it had been, and then we did have weakness in grocery. Longmont reports eating places and grocery together, but that is probably one of the more notable things is that Longmont had really strong growth in both eating places and groceries, and the dollar amount is even significant. And also Lewisville had strength in eating places and grocery as well. So it's sort of interesting to look at, yes, I think that there is, it is very likely we are losing some sales to people that previously maybe came into Boulder, or they come into Boulder and work and they used to work and eat here, and now maybe they're doing that outside of Boulder more than they had. So it is interesting, they did, they did have quite strong growth in a number of industry categories.
It's interesting that Boulder's grown fairly slowly in the half percentish range, so our numbers year over year are going to look very, you know, if we see an increase or decrease, it's going to be not because population changed, but because a trend changed. But we look at Longmont and Lewisville and other places like that, I mean, it seems to me like we should be normalizing somehow, whether it's, you know, subtracting the percentage growth in either commercial square footage or in number of people, right? So if that grew at, say, 3% in one of those places, you'd just back that out, because it's hard to compare, for me, to look at these numbers and compare and say how we're doing relative to someplace that's growing. And it, there are other factors, as Cindy pointed out, but I think that would be one that would be easier than some of the more esoteric factors to just pull out, to normalize somehow. And if we're going to do a retail study, I think that's something the consultant can help us take a look at.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is retail, I mean, is Lewisville growing? I thought they were more locked in.
I don't know about rates.
Growing, but I don't think they're growing anywhere near that, at that pace.
No.
No. So then again, another possible reason is competition from online retail. So online retail sales definitely have been increasing, they've been growing about a 1% a year for this data source, and it looks like it's accelerating slightly, but it still is not a significant portion of all retail sales. So it is growing to, in 2018, they think about 10% of total retail sales, which is significant, but still 90% of retail sales are not online. I think what has been interesting in the last year, particularly maybe last year or two, is shifting into new markets, not so much just the consumer good, but rather groceries and then these, you know, services that provide you apparel in the box and you just automatically get sent your monthly addition to your wardrobe, either for work or play. And so those, those types of business models are generating more online sales and, and they're not some of the bigger retailers, they're more niche companies. So I think the other thing to think about when we think about online retail sales is, well, isn't this happening everywhere? So why would Boulder be different? You know, why are we maybe more impacted by the competition from online retail sales than other communities? And it may be related to our demographics, which is on the next slide, this slide was presented.
Actually, I wanted to ask a question about the previous, sorry to interrupt you, but on the, the previous one, the, the left axis is the percent of total retail sales, is that correct?
Correct.
So the, so it's not that retail sales are growing 1% a year, their share is growing.
That's true.
And so like, if you look at from 2016 to 2018, it's going from 8% to 10%, it's actually a 25% increase in the share, but probably the base sales of the whole economy are also growing. So actually, I think those are some pretty substantial increases.
Good point, I appreciate it.
In there, and, and so that I'll be interested in this next demographic slide, because I would speculate that our community might order at higher rates from online retailers.
That's what we speculate too.
So just to kind of segue before we move on to the next slide, do you know, or can you estimate, I know that we collect online sales from some retailers. Do we have an idea what percentage of all online sales that we collect tax on? Is it a half, a third, a 10%, 90%?
I would say I don't think we have a very good handle on that.
Okay.
And I would, I, we can look into that more, but one of the reasons why I think we don't have a very good idea about that is when, I will say, Amazon started making agreements with cities and with the state, the estimates of the impact were not very close. So even just with that one retailer, it's, it is, people have not done a very good job estimating the impact, but.
Well, I think, I think Amazon publicly reports that about 50% of its, all of its sales are from third-party vendors, and I think they generally don't collect sales tax from third-party vendors. So right there, we can just use, just using Amazon as a base, we can say, all right, everything that Amazon sells itself, we collect and everything, Amazon, most things that Amazon sells on behalf of third parties, they don't collect, so there's 50% right there, right? And so could you extrapolate out to other, other vendors that sell online?
We can definitely look at that.
Okay. And what, what efforts do we take? I know there's some legal issues here, but what efforts do we take to, to try to collect sales, sales tax from online sellers who we are legally entitled to because of our presence here? In other words, do we chase people on?
We do audit them, yes. I mean, we definitely, part of our audit program is to look at retailers that have a physical presence and an online presence, and they would audit both elements of the business.
Okay, thanks.
And just one, one more thought on, trying to figure out some of that data is that if we know which vendors are remitting online sales tax to us, it's probably publicly available, if they're bigger ones, you know, like, like Amazon or Walmart or whatever, it's probably publicly available a rough percentage of their share of online sales in total. So we might be able to make some guesses from that, from those kinds of numbers.
We will look into that. So yes, we thought also possibly Boulder may be ordering online at a higher rate is one of the things that we think the demographics are impacting. We have a, we are moving, this slide shows how we are moving from blue to red to green over time. So the under 27 age group, demographic group is growing, certainly they are more likely to purchase online. They also don't have a lot of buying power, but if whatever buying power they do have, they're shifting more of it to online purchases than local purchases, that would have an effect. So this age is definitely possibility. The other phenomena that we're seeing is that we're aging, so we're growing more into the over 45 and certainly over time into the more than 65 age group. Now, it is interesting that apparently from some data that we have seen that those groups do significantly buy online, the middle age and the elderly, the other, or the people over 65, they purchase less frequently, but they do purchase online. So that, we don't know what effect that will have in the long run. But we do think, absent the online piece, this demographic shift of moving more into the over 45 and over 65 would be impacting sales tax revenue because they are spending less money on taxable goods and probably more on services. They're sort of past their prime stage in their life where they're acquiring goods, and in fact, some of them are downsizing and reducing, so they're not purchasing as many taxable goods, and in fact, they're, they're purchasing more services which are not taxable. So that could be, this demographic shift of aging in Boulder and in Boulder County could be impacting our sales tax revenue.
Could it also be our historical mix of products? In other words, I see that our two weakest areas or biggest drops are in consumer electronics and apparel, which are two items that are really, really easy to buy online, we're really, really strong on pot, which you can't buy, buy online, and you can't go online to buy your out-to, out-to-dinner experience, right? So could it be that our retail mix has been skewed, is unintentionally skewed towards those things that are easiest to buy online? In other words, are we going through a bit of a shift here as, as online stuff is cannibalizing bricks and mortar and we just happen to be more heavily invested in those types of things that are easily sold online as opposed to surrounding communities?
Yes, I think that could definitely. Yeah, the next slide sort of, sort of speaks to this retail mix a little bit also. This is a slide we found online by this site, they characterized it as the retail apocalypse, but the message often online is that it's not, brick and mortar stores are not declining in total, it's just the mix is shifting. And so this slide shows what stores have been increasing in number across the country and what types of stores have been decreasing in number across the country. And the types of stores that have been increasing in number and then therefore the sales, we don't have a lot of in Boulder, the Dollar Store, the, the, you know, big pet centers, super centers, sporting goods stores, Sports Authority closed a while ago, we don't have Warehouse Club. So some of these that are seeing the growth across the country, we're not seeing those stores here in Boulder, so people in Boulder may be going other places to shop at these stores. And then this does sort of align with what we're seeing in Boulder, as you noted, that apparel declining and consumer electronics declining, those are being purchased online, and so stores are closing. But yes, I definitely think the retail mix is, is impacting.
I mean, the other thing that we might think about is, you know, this is probably the average cross-country, right, where our land costs are way higher. And so another thing that might be interesting to do is look at pure cities that are like that, like Palo Alto, Mountain View, maybe LA, places that have really high land prices, and see what's going on there, relatively affluent populations and educated, because it might be interesting to see if we're tracking, because I think some of those on the top would be more difficult to pencil out here, new, anyway.
Just look at the cities with commercial linkage fees of $30 or more per square foot.
That explains what's been going on.
So that was the end of sort of the discussion of retail sales tax, but we did also just want to briefly show the chart of business use tax and then construction use tax. And again, business use tax is the companion to the sales tax, and what we did for 2018 is look at this, and it is sort of volatile, because there can be large purchases by some businesses in certain years that, that add some volatility. So we decided for ongoing budget purposes, we should reset the base at a lower amount, and then in those years where we see, you know, a little spike in business use tax, then that revenue should be used for one-time purchases, but the base should be.
Can you tell us the, the largest and the most volatile types of business use taxes? That, you know, the ones, are we talking software? What are we talking, that would spike?
Software, or it could be large manufacturers in town.
Doing?
When they purchase products for use in their facility.
As opposed to buying, I'm just trying to distinguish between the use and the retail?
Like if they do a major renovation of their facility or something and they get all new.
Because if they renovate, doesn't that show up in retail?
Construction use tax, but some of the goods that they then put in would be business use tax.
So, so you get taxed on the equipment that you buy, right? And so say you order it from out of state because it's specialty or something of that nature and it's designed and built custom for you and shipped in, there was no sales tax collected at the point of sale, you have to report that to the city and pay tax on it. And the city patrols businesses a lot more closely than residents, right? Because residents order a lot of stuff online, a lot of that doesn't get taxed, but the business gives you something that you can go in and audit and look at. And so it's anything that a business does that increases its capabilities will probably generate the business use tax. So you could see that varying, you know, if large, a couple of large businesses make a change in their operation, get rid of some old equipment and bring in some new equipment, that's going to all end up in this bucket.
What we call FFNE furniture fixtures equipment is largely, so it's often from bigger companies, and it will be sort of lumpy. Some company might buy 30 new computers and 10 new printers and things like that. And so similarly, for construction use tax, we can sometimes get very large projects that then bump the revenue up, but then we might not get those large projects, or we might get a few large projects in one year, but then not in the next. And so again, for 2018 and for ongoing, we thought it was a good idea to sort of reset the base, and then when we see these spikes, we could use that revenue for one-time expenditures, of which there are plenty of need. So key takeaways regarding sales and use tax, again, there haven't been signs of recession. You know, that might be a risk going forward, but we've seen this flattening in a time where there has not been sign of recession. There are signs of shifting spending patterns, we don't know, you know, is shifting still happening? So I think it's just good to be caution, cautious and prudent to assume that flattening retail sales tax revenue could be a long-term trend or at least a medium-term trend. And then to reset to a lower baseline for ongoing business use tax and construction use tax, and to the extent we see revenues above, you can budget those at the time. And again, need to adjust ongoing expenditures to match projections for ongoing revenue. So really, this focus on what, what is a good assumption for ongoing revenue for budgeting purposes. And again, we will continue to examine the trends, we appreciate all of your insights and ideas for further analysis, and we definitely will pursue those and report back. And then we will have a study even later this year.
Thank you, Cara. So that's a lot of data coming your way, so what does it all mean? At the end of 2017, we always take the opportunity to look at what our revenues did, which you just got a large context of how we ended the year and why we might consider revising down our initial revenue projections. And so largely, we're going to be talking about the general fund and then briefly talk about other funds, but because the general fund sales and use tax is 42%, we figured we wanted to address any issues that arose. So back in February, a few short months ago, when we looked at our revenue projections and to Cara's point, realigned some of our ongoing assumptions, we noticed a gap that isn't good. Our ongoing expenditures were outpacing our ongoing revenues for 2018, and by not doing anything immediately, it would exponentially grow in the out years because of a compounding effect. And so you received email, and there's been a lot of discussions about addressing this gap immediately. So department directors went to work and immediately closed the gap, which is what you're seeing in this chart, April, right now. We were able to identify, and we'll go into the solutions of how we found it, but able to identify some cuts largely one time, given just the, you know, it was February, now it's April, kind of a short timeframe, we want to be. timeframe. We want to be thoughtful on what we propose ongoing. So in the 2019 budget, you'll see a lot more of these discussions that talk about our ongoing strategies. Largely 2018, you won't see very much with regards to service level impacts.
So can I ask a question?
Yep.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Yeah.
So the ongoing expenditure shows a steady increase.
Yep.
And is that purely inflationary increase? Does that assume that like we froze headcount? We froze programs, and then that's just how much you pay 3% more a year?
It presumes that we don't freeze, well, yes, that we freeze headcount. We had the same amount. So it presumes, you know, personnel increase along with healthcare is the largest piece of, 70% is personnel expenditures in the general fund. And so just by the natural increase in salaries and in benefits, that's largely what makes up the increase year-over-year.
Okay, so it doesn't assume any increases in programs or?
It's just point in time, 2018 budget, if we were to maintain everything that we've committed to today.
Great. And is there, do you know offhand a percent factor that you use to anticipate increases?
Yeah, I do. 3% for personnel, 5% for healthcare, and then we project about a 1% for just ongoing NP, your supplies, which is fairly low, but that's what we've been using.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we addressed the gap. Like I said, 2019 is going to require a lot more work. So the one-time fix doesn't help us. It helps us in 18, but we need to make these financially solvable. So the 2019 target will look more closely aligned with this by having ongoing reductions, and there's still more work to do to always ensure. Again, revenue projections, they change constantly. It's point in time, but this is what we understand, especially given that we think that the revenue trend is more of a long-term here to stay at a slower growth rate.
So following on Erin's question, the yellow line, which is our ongoing expenditures, between your first slide and this third slide, that slope is the same. It's just you've moved it down to the, to the right, because we would need to reduce services. We're still assuming a 3% growth rate and whatever our headcount is and 5% for healthcare, just moving that down. And you're about to tell us what that means, right?
Yes.
As far as actual services?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, not quite yet. Sorry. One more chart. So in addition to both the kind of ongoing pressures that we have in our increasing costs, both in personnel and in healthcare, this is a chart that we always try to keep updated just to provide perspective. We call it our buying power. So what it shows on the blue line is what our sales tax has been. So yeah, we've seen a lot of growth in our sales tax over the past, gosh, 10, 15 years. A little bit of the flattening as we saw between 2017. But when you adjust our sales tax revenues for inflation, our buying power, meaning that things are getting more expensive and the revenue that we're receiving is, remained fairly flat, you know, some increases, but certainly not at the rate of increase that we've seen for sales tax. So this is something we always want to keep in mind. And again, this is inflation-only. Construction costs, certainly in the past few years, have been way above even our inflation projections. So it's just a constant reminder that we need to be cautious as we program ongoing expenditures. And now I'm going to talk about our proactive approach. So like I said, in 2018, a lot of our reductions, both given the short timeframe and what we knew we had onboard for 2018, have been largely one-time reductions focusing heavily on personnel savings. So there's been kind of a small portion from this related to staffing reductions or holds of positions through the entire year, but rather more of a calculation on what our normal vacancy and kind of churn of staffing and the hiring process. You know, it takes several months, and that in turn accumulates savings. So what we've asked departments to do is calculate those savings so that we could capture them for 2018 alone. So 70% of our reduction strategies in 2018 relate to personal savings, not a coincidence that 70% of our expenditures are personnel. So moving forward, we'll likely see that a lot of the savings will need to come from some sort of mix of personnel and operations. There are also non-personnel expenditures. What this means is that perhaps we're using in-source resources instead of contracting out different types of services or consulting firms, a small portion of it. And then reevaluating processes and programs. So an example of this would be in Channel 8, we've had a lot of technology upgrades in the past few years that have led to operational savings, which is great. So kind of giving back those savings that we previously had budgeted, or looking at different partnerships, both within the county or outside the city. So that's an example of what it will be. Again, I do not anticipate that there will be many service level reductions or changes that the community will see in 2018 alone, just given that a large portion is just from our typical vacancy savings. We wanted to highlight what other funds are doing, because general fund not alone. You saw in Cara's chart that showed where our retail sales or sales and use tax goes. Also largely goes to transportation, open space, and they're actually much more reliant on this. And if you'll recall, in the 2018 budget process during the CIP discussions, we actually highlighted some of the changes that they needed to make last year because they're so much more reliant on sales and use tax. So transportation's doing focused reductions in line with their master plan and reductions around their system enhancements, and some ongoing operating reductions related to temporary staff and contracted services. And then similarly, in open space, following our operating budget guidelines, they're expiring positions through attrition. This is a multi-year process where they've identified various positions that once that employer retires, there is no longer with the city, they would no longer need it. They've done this through a lot of cross-training and process improvements. And then evaluating their carryover for both capital, and then incorporating new technologies to improve efficiencies. They recently developed or received a project management system that's really helped increase their efficiency.
Can I ask a question here? The transportation says CIP reductions prioritized. Do we have a specific list of how it's been reprioritized?
Will we?
Sure.
The transportation master plan?
Yeah, we'll just wait for Mike till next, next half.
Yes. All right. So not only have we looked at what reductions we want to make, but it's critically important in maintaining some of our existing commitments as well. And we wanted to highlight two things that were really important to us. As Cheryl mentioned, our reserves are absolutely critical. Reserves are not being recommended as a short-term or a long-term strategy. They're really meant to be in times of emergencies. And given that we don't think that this is a blip or a recession, it's not wise to use those fundings because they're really considered one-time. You know, the most recent example, or the one that's most prominent is the flood, right? We had $28 million in damage, and because at the time we had strong reserves, we were able to not discontinue services, not have to stop, you know, paying employees. That was never a concern of ours, is that we wouldn't be able to make payroll where it was in some other communities. So I think it's really important that we maintain our reserves for 2018 at 18%. And then, as Cheryl also highlighted, one of the things that I know is a huge goal and something that we are personally very happy with is this capital improvement program. It's a small dollar amount compared to the number of assets that we have in the general fund, and it's our intention to grow it using ongoing money. And we think that, just given, you know, the conversations that we had around the community culture and safety extension and kind of the questioning of why some of these things weren't funded just in our annual budget process, this is the reason why, is now that we have it, we certainly want to maintain it and keep it going. And we'll get into, there's a different section of the general fund capital projects recommended as a second piece, but those are existing commitments that we are going to carry on forward with.
And I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, but I have another question here on the reserves. So it's great that we're maintaining it. We shouldn't be using those to plug one-time gaps. I know we've had a reserve increase program. Are we still thinking about adding to the reserves or keeping them at the same level they are currently?
Our goal is still 20 by 20, 20%,
So despite the declining revenues, we're still thinking about upping our reserve levels?
Correct.
That's a point for discussion.
Yeah, I do want to discuss that, how that decision was made and whether we've bought into it. But I had another question about that. When we were looking at whether, what the impact would be if we passed the Muni reauthorization or continuing authorization in 2017's election, it passed, and we had been shown analysis that showed that the reserves would fall because of the way the money would get spent at first in that effort. So will we be increasing above 18% in the short term?
No. And what we found, so that was a point in time, right, where the energy team had presumed that they would be needing more dollars this year than the revenue would bring in. Now that they've done some analysis and seen just kind of how slow and long everything takes, that they're not anticipating on using any more dollars above what the revenue is coming in at for that reelection effort.
Okay, so that's a change then. Is that reflected in some information packet somewhere? Or how would we have learned that change since this?
I'm not sure.
So it's not in an information packet yet because we're still working on our contracts with Xcel Energy. Those contracts will be provided to the council on May 22nd, as you know. And at that time, I think we can probably talk a little bit more about what our anticipations are around the expenses for the rest of the year. But right now, we don't have it all settled.
And actually, Cheryl reminded me, in that supplemental appropriation, that was for both the sugary sweetened beverage back in February CCS and energy, we did highlight that there would likely not be a need to have to dip into it. So that was also, thank you for reminding me.
I just wasn't sure, I didn't make the connection between that and the reserves, so.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to pause with a lot of information thrown at you and ask questions related to just this information, our strategies, or any other sales and use tax kind of projection questions that you may have before we move on to what capital programs we're recommending for 2018.
I hope we've mostly been asking them as we go, because how much, how many?
We have one more slide.
Oh, that's it?
Yes.
For all the bonding issues, just one more? Oh, okay. Ask away. Who's got questions on?
Maybe I should.
Yep.
I just have one clarification. If I remember correctly, during the council, Jane, we were going to hire some new staff members, correct, I think, in planning?
Yep.
So does that mean we're not hiring those staff members now?
We are hiring them, yes. And in fact, when the first adjustment to base comes through for first reading on May 1st, you'll see that those are included as new positions. So the reductions that we're making in 2018 take us to a point where we still can add those positions as council requested and still make our budget balance and more than balance.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I just have a catch-up question, and that is, what were the revenue projections for 2018?
So 2018 was going to be 2% off of our 2017 budget. And so what we revised that back downwards was basically flat and a little bit less than what our 2017 budget was, just because we didn't make our 2017 budget actually come to fruition, right? We had to revise that downward last year, too.
Were you anticipating having growth, though, that was more in keeping with our neighbors?
No, not necessarily keeping with our neighbors. It was just typically what you see even in flat years is that your growth rate will at least catch up to what the inflation rate is. And so even in slow growth, you have this natural increase of cost of services or cost of goods related to inflation. So we thought at minimum it would at least catch up to that. And what we're seeing is that it's still kind of tracking downwards from even an inflationary increase.
Thank you.
Sorry. For construction use and business use, we actually put that into the original budget that we balanced. We accounted for the fact that we were going to reset the base for both of those revenue sources. So it was more the sales tax where we were off.
Thank you.
Given the volatility of sales tax and our dependence on sales tax, has there been some discussions among staff about possibly shifting our reliance away from sales tax and toward other sources like property tax, which tends to be more stable? In other words, not increasing the overall revenue pie, but shifting from a less reliable or more volatile source like sales tax to a less volatile source like property tax?
We've talked about a lot of things, and also in addition to that, trying to diversify our revenues even more. Because if you take sales and property tax, that's almost 75% of our budget. And in times of bad economic times, even property tax stagnates or goes down. So we are looking at that. One of the other things we want to look at in the next year or two is the fees that we're charging, and are we charging the right amount to recover the cost of the service? A lot of our fees we've not really looked at in a while. So we want to go beyond just sales tax and property tax if possible.
So when you come back to us, I'd be really curious to see some benchmarking. You know, what are other cities comparable, cities with $30 linkage fees? Sam, you're going to have to listen to this for a really long time, but always ingest. But what are our peer cities, what is their reliance on property sales, other taxes? I'd be curious about that. The second is, I'd be curious, you know, we hear a lot from the community about, you know, comparing us to other cities on expenditures. I'd be curious of what our revenue comparison is on a per capita basis. We bring in X million, 100 million, hundreds of millions of dollars in property tax, sales tax, all of our sources' revenue. On a per capita basis, how do we compare to other cities? Because I'd be really curious to see not only the mix, but the dollars per person.
We can definitely get that information.
Okay, thanks.
I guess we're doing this retail study, and we're going to talk about it later, but I'm just curious, are we setting it up to address all the things that we are learning from this? I mean, what's the synergy there?
The answer is we haven't set it up yet.
Okay.
So we've been waiting to present to you the downtown retail study, and that is now going to be on July 10th. Part of that discussion, we'll be talking about the, how did Kraft, if you will, the request for proposal to our consultant, what are the kinds of things that we are wanting to find out about? So a thing that you might not recall is that when this discussion started in the budget last year, the thought was that perhaps we needed to understand what kind of goods and services we need to have a sustainable community that provides goods and services to all economic strata of the city, noticing that Walmart had left and that, for example, we don't have any dollar stores in the city of Boulder. We are losing some of our used car dealers. So the retail study as originally imagined was that it was going to really try to take a broad look at are we providing the right kinds of goods and services in our community that can reach everyone. The discussion that we've been having tonight related to the retail sales adds another dimension to it. And that dimension is, given what we've got in terms of retail sales, are there other things that we should be going after that would increase our revenues, or how do we compare with others? So you've added, and that's great, a number of other points of information that you'd like to receive. And so as we prepare for the July 10 study session, we'll be thinking more broadly about what that study actually looks like.
I think it's food for thought for all of us if we have additional thoughts that are spurred by this conversation. I am curious about the bond thing, because that was a big part of them. You're going to talk about that next?
Bond?
No. Well, I'm curious, as part of our background for tonight, we talked a lot about our bonding capacity, and maybe we're just going to talk about that when we have our conversation about broadband or other things that we, is that how this is set up?
Yeah, the presentation itself didn't reference any of our bonding capacity. It was included in the packet as a reference to set the context of some of the things that we have on the radar that could affect our expenses moving forward.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll just save that for, I guess, will it come up in broadband? Like whether we can afford something like that?
Yeah, I think it will, it could come up as we have our conversations on May 8th around ballot measures, because we'll be talking about broadband earlier that night, and then you'll be thinking about what do you want to put on the ballot. So the background material... So the background material had a list of many capital items, and there were a few other items, like affordable housing funds, that we, if we had enough money, we would love to be able to address those issues. You've heard from the Library Commission about the needs that the library feels like they've got in their master plan coming up. And so we were trying to have that background material to set you up for future discussions, really not tonight, but May 8th, when we bring the library master plan back, about how would we address those needs. And interestingly, when Bob asked the question about, should we become less reliant on sales taxes, one of the things that we've talked about is those other needs could be addressed through property tax perhaps. But that was different than your question, which was, oh, if we switched our source of revenues, but kept the amount the same by like maybe reducing sales tax, have we talked about that? So we haven't actually talked about that, or at least I haven't talked about it. So there's lots of different things to be thinking about. And we wanted you to be well aware of the fact that there are many needs in our community and to be thinking about that as we start talking about what might be on the ballot, what the future holds in all those different realms.
Okay. I don't remember if it was in this packet, but did, was there, I know there was discussion of property tax, mill levy, et cetera, but was it in there whether or not property tax was specifically diverted to some expenditure or not? I don't remember. Does it just go into the general fund?
Well, so the property tax, if we just passed like another increment of property tax, let's say, in general, that would go into the general fund. But you can also dedicate it if you chose to do that. And so that is the way the wording of the ballot question would be. So if the council said, oh, we would like to have a mill of property tax dedicated to affordable housing, city attorney would write that ballot question, and then the voters would vote on it, and then it could be dedicated.
I see. Thank you.
Conversely, some of the challenges we have are directly related to the fact that we've dedicated a lot of our taxes. In other words, we have less, I'm not being critical, but we have less flexibility because we're only talking about our general fund, which is like a third of our budget, right? The other two-thirds, I mean, one, you know, big chunk of it's utility, I get that. But we've got a big chunk of our budget that is dedicated. So we have piles of money sitting over here, and then we have deficits. And we don't have the ability to move it from one place to another because of that dedication.
But it's less dedicated than it was.
We're moving in the right direction. The question is whether we want to continue to move that direction.
And it's not necessarily piles of money either.
Some.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for tonight?
We have one more slide.
I'll let you do your last slide.
You sure? Okay. So this is related to the general fund capital. We wanted to remind council, these dollars were already appropriated, so we're not asking for additional appropriation. But we did say, because this was a brand-new kind of type of expenditure, we would come back and update council with what we think are the top priorities for this first year of funding. And we can briefly go through the list and answer any questions you may have about the specific projects, but most of them should be familiar. The rescue vehicle is a public safety vehicle that was part of the original project suggested for the community culture safety tax. Again, this is one where the committee kind of thought maybe that the city should already have funds for these types of expenses. It's way past its lifespan, and we can answer any questions about it as well. But we think that this is a prudent investment in our community, given that it's a university town as well. The Hogan-Pancast land purchase has already been committed. And when we did go before you, we said that it would largely come from the general fund capital. There's a small portion that we may loan to the general fund pending kind of the revenue projections. And then the Boulder Res4 South Shore Enhancement is a project that's going on in Parks and Recreation. They already had dedicated funds for this, but due to the public outreach and the increase kind of both in scope and the land use requirements, they require additional funding above what they have capacity for in their funds. And then a data center redundancy, again, the descriptions are in your packet, but this is to improve redundancy and reliability of our data centers so that we don't have a complete crash of the systems when any given sector goes out. And then we are recommending that the gender-neutral restrooms, which is another high priority, especially for the library, be funded. They have a dedicated reserve that's mainly for capital, because it's one-time dollars, be funded out of that dedication to get that project moving forward. And then again, there's a couple of projects that are recommended, not this year for funding, but I certainly anticipate that as we move into the 2019 budget process, these are the next top on the list.
I was, I'll say, a little surprised to find out our library restrooms are not up to code. So it seems like we need to address that.
So just to make sure I understand, is this how we are going to allocate these funds for the first year? Great. So fire breathing apparatus and the rescue vehicle, those are, it's interesting which one is funded and which one is not. Is this $115,000 for a few upgrades and replacements?
It's for surplus. It's surplus. So this year, we already updated and bought, I think, over a million dollars worth of upgraded fire breathing apparatus for our firefighters. And this would have been just surplus, extra units that we actually use for training. So we'll be thinking about that next year.
I have a few things. I was, apologies for continuing to talk here. Just one thing on the data center redundancies, this is an area that I have some professional expertise in. This is an outsourcable thing. And so I just wondered to what extent we've evaluated the cost benefit of sending that to.
I know Julia Richman is here, and I'll wait for her to come down the stairs, since she is definitely much more the expert than I am.
So for this project, the first phase is really studying what options we have with regard to the technologies, systems that we have already in our data centers. So understanding what we can move, where we can move it to, and how we move it. And then using that strategy, we'll actually execute and implement that hopefully in the next year. So yes, we can outsource it, but the first phase is understanding what to do with each thing. And we will expect to use external help to make those decisions.
Great. So in other words, a final decision hasn't been made about the future of where the servers go, is that?
No.
Right, okay. Well, I just encourage you to look carefully, because you get all the redundancy and such that the professional data centers have already done. You don't necessarily have to build a building that has those.
Exactly. Thanks.
Great. Thank you for that. The next question was about whether, can we get itemized the budget decisions that have been made? Like, for example, we've got some emails today about a position that was dropped, so, which I don't have an issue with. But if it's possible to hear the decisions that have already been made, I think that would be useful information for us to know as council.
Yeah, we can do that.
Great, thank you. And then, so this is not a feedback night, right? It's an information night, correct?
If there's both, we're happy to take both.
Okay.
Especially as we prepare for 2019. I mean, this is all setting the stage for discussions to come and how we direct departments to help develop their budget.
Okay, because we could offer a fair amount of feedback on this topic, but we're out of time, I know. I just, I guess the, this seems like it's a big area and it's worth some discussion on. So maybe there's an opportunity to have a little bit more talk about it at the adjustment to base. But I guess the one, the one thing that I would bring up tonight would be the question of growing the reserves at a time of flattening revenues. So I'm interested to see the scale of the cuts that we're looking at, and I think that would help determine the best path forward for our community. But I, you know, if we can make those, if we can make these adjustments relatively painlessly, that's one thing. But if we are cutting in things that are really a benefit to our community, that may, this may not be the time to also be growing the reserves.
Yeah, so for 2018, we believe that the changes that we're making to the budget will not be apparent to the community. We can make those without impacting. When it comes to 2019, I think that will be a fruitful time to have the conversation about the reserves. So we can definitely talk about it then. Again, we are going to recommend 19% for 2019 and try to show you a balanced, and we will show you a balanced budget that includes that. But you may decide that some of the recommendations that we're making for reductions are not ones you'd want to take. And then talking about the reserve in that context would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I think maybe the itemized list may not help you inform any of the reserve conversations quite yet, but more in the context of the 2019 budget.
Those were actually different requests. I mean, I think it's, the first one's about the itemization, is more just to have an understanding with what's happening with the organization.
Sounds good. And then just as a reminder, too, because I'm on the same page with Jane, it will be 19% recommended. Any addition is one-time dollars as well, and we're really focused on the ongoing. So just making that clear to everyone, too, about what the impact is on some of our decisions.
Great.
We're wrapping up. But I have just two things. One is that I'm sure one of your recommendations is that everyone buy Boulder, go out and spend some money, right? But I'm wondering what you do with this 37-year-old rescue vehicle? What happens to that? Does it go to resource?
So Carrie Weinheimer?
It's still working, right?
It's barely.
It's lifetime, I understand that from the reading, but.
Like way past its lifetime. It's not working.
I'm Carrie Weinheimer, Deputy Chief of Police. Frankly, our rescue vehicle has seen the back of a wrecker more than it's seen scenes and incidents. That's how decrepit it is. There have been many times it has not even started when we've needed it. So it'll be, it'll be probably sold for scrap.
So not to another community? It's not even that usable?
I would hate to strap another community with that. I think it would be.
Just curious.
It would be a sinking hole for money if we gave it to someone else.
Yeah.
I'm good. It was on reserves, and it's a year away. A few short months away.
I just, I appreciate Erin's comment, but I do think our community is at significant risk for more disasters than Denver, say, you know, with flood and fire risks. So it'd be interesting, if we are going to have that talk, to look at, you know, what those risks present and some of the costs. We have the flood data. I would think we would need a lot more reserves than the average community.
Yep, we'll provide that context.
Great. All right, well, I think this is the beginning. This is a nice introduction to the budget season.
Yep.
Which you can consider, yeah, officially begun. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for all your thoughtful insight. Really appreciate it.
And those were some amazing charts. I mean, it was really well done.
It just reminded to the TAB folks in the audience, you can come up and join us.
You know, any, fit in there with staff. Mike, how many staff are you going to have up here?
Three.
Three. So.
I know, every time I think of that, I think of it.
Okay, who else is up here?
Bill's gonna. I would think.
You and I can drive and co-drive, and then Natalie can have my seat.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. You're right. We need to maybe trade with Bill.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
When it's her turn.
We'd want to get this show on hold. That would be great. Mike, do you want some water?
Hey, Mike, grab some water. Give some.
Water! Water!
Okay, next topic, transportation. And we have all the TAB members that are present are up here.
I believe so.
Looks like it.
Yes.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll just turn it right over to Mike.
All right. So Erin, did you want me to talk about the budget before we get off on the subjects for tonight, or?
It did seem a little bit different. I was just curious what CIP changes you were considering.
So it's probably worth describing the transportation budget and how it differs from the general fund, and that the transportation budget is over two-thirds sales tax as opposed to the general fund, which is more around the 40%. And so our overall goals are different in that the reduction or the flattening in the sales taxes impacted the transportation fund more than it has the general fund. So we're looking at reductions in the neighborhood of 8%, so around a million and a half to $2 million annually against the transportation fund, transportation fund being approximately $24 million a year. And so the, what we use is, our guiding principles are the transportation master plan guiding principles in our reduction strategies. And so what we, our top priority is safety and maintenance of the existing infrastructure. And then beneath that is investing in enhancements to the system. And so what our reductions are primarily focused on are things that are going to slow the pace of our ability to invest in enhancements to the infrastructure, so our ability to leverage grant funding and those types of things. What we're not doing is sacrificing any grant monies that we already have. And so the, for instance, oh, we get a lot of money, federal money, through the Denver Regional Council of Government's Transportation Improvements Program. And so the projects that we've gotten previously, those require local match, and we are maintaining the funding to assure that we'll be able to leverage those federal dollars. One of the things that we'll talk about a little bit later is that the picture related to the federal grants is actually going to likely be one-half to one-quarter of what we've received previously, just based upon some of the rules of engagement that is coming out of the Denver Regional Council of Government changes. And so our reductions are primarily in the enhancement category. We maintain the funding for the maintenance of the existing infrastructure. And then we did have some strategic reductions that relate to things such as level of service around aesthetics. So for instance, changing mowing cycles or weeding cycles, those types of things that won't impact the actual, the viability of the asset, but will change the aesthetics of the landscape strips or the medians and those types of things. And then another thing that we'll talk a bit about in our third section tonight is also our buy-ups of transit service with RTD. That's another area which we've reduced, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. Partly, there's some dynamics there around whether or not RTD can actually accept our money for buy-ups based upon their ability to get drivers and buses. And so that's another portion of the reductions, and we'll talk about that a little bit more later when Natalie comes up to talk about transit. So.
So I was wondering if there are any specific projects that were affected in terms of being canceled or delayed?
So the way that the CIP is programmed right now is it's positioned to really give us a lot of flexibility around whether we get grant funding. And so the dollars that are identified are more generic right now for enhancement, awaiting for the next Dr. Cog tip cycle. And so it really is not identified currently in, for a specific project, knowing that we're going to be submitting for grants in the fall and then figuring out what grants we get and what local match we require. And then the remainder would be then dedicated to local projects. So nothing specific as of this point in time. The things that would logically be in that category would be things like implementing these corridor studies that were currently underway, so 30th Street, Colorado, East Arapaho. that were currently underway. So 30th Street, Colorado, East Arapahoe and Canyon, those would be the candidate projects most likely that would have to be slowed down.
But it sounds like the answer is just no, that no current projects have been delayed or canceled.
Correct, yeah.
That was what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I took the long road. I apologize. So, you bet. So thanks very much for the opportunity to spend some time with you tonight. We are going to cover three subjects this evening. The initial scoping around our transportation master plan update, then our safety initiatives around Vision Zero, and the third one around our transit studies. And we hope to take about a half an hour for each one of those subjects. And after each one, we'll get into discussion on that particular subject is the intention, and that's the way that the presentation is organized. And TAB has joined us, and so there are three TAB members here. And we have a, an area in the presentation right after my comments where they'll share their thoughts on these same subjects. One of the things that I wanted to emphasize is that while we're here tonight talking about three elements, we are also working on a bunch of different things that we'll be visiting with you fairly quickly. So some of those are the vision plan for East Arapahoe, which we hope to come back in the second quarter and get your feedback on. And then we do have a study session May 22nd on our 30th and Colorado corridor studies. And then just to mention a couple of cool things that are also going on at the same time. So some of our innovations, the Bloomberg Challenge around low-income mobility programs are some exciting things that we're doing right now. So with that, I'll turn it over to the TAB to share their thoughts on the subjects we're going to cover tonight.
Hi there. I'm Jennifer Nicole. I'm the new Chair of the Transportation Advisory Board. And I've got Bill, Bill Riggler and Tila Duhaimi.
Duhaimi.
Duhaimi. I should have known that. Here with me tonight. Since this is the first time TAB has actually been up before this new city council, we just wanted to kind of refresh who we are and why we exist. And so TAB is tasked with advising the city manager, city council, and the planning board on matters concerning Boulder's transportation, transportation systems, and to track the transportation master plan specifically, among other things. So the two members that are not with us tonight are Johnny Drauzdeck and Mark McIntyre. Every year after the new board and commission's appointees are made, we meet for our TAB retreat, which is going to be held next week. So the current priorities that we're referencing here are actually the priorities that the board identified almost exactly a year ago. I don't anticipate that you'll see a whole lot of change in them. So what we're going to do is talk really quickly about kind of just what we've prioritized and the kind of lens that we look at transportation projects through when we're evaluating from them from a TAB perspective. So in terms of transportation safety and Vision Zero, we're going to discuss that more on the next slide. So I'm going to let that one stand for now. But meaningful parking reform, really, we're talking about adopting, accelerating the adoption of the Access Management Parking Strategy. That's what AMS is. The recommendations for parking, that they be consistent with Sump Principles, which are shared, unbundled, managed, and paid. So when we talk about parking reform and, and parking in Boulder, those are the things that we're looking for, and how that relates to transportation demand management, which is the TDM you see there. We spent a lot of time last year specifically focused on improving our proactive community engagement. And you may have seen from TAB more op-eds in the Daily Camera, more posting on Nextdoor, more social media activity, and kind of spearheaded by Bill, really challenging staff every time they gave us a proposal to really think through the communication strategy and what that meant in terms of community engagement and in terms of the community feedback process. As, as TAB, we really regard ourselves as the liaison between the community and city council, and we really hope to facilitate the community being able to express their opinions and us being able to, you know, present that to you. We've done that through a lot more public hearings at our Transportation Advisory Board meetings.
Have those been well attended?
I think they have. I mean, we've had full houses at our public hearings. And we've, we've done, we've tried to really partner with community organizations to publicize those events. In terms of transportation equity, what we're really talking about there is promoting first and last mile solutions, enhancing accessibility to transportation, considering the financial costs associated with various transportation modes, and promoting complete streets. So next slide, please. In terms of what we're going to talk about tonight and the transportation master plan update, as members of TAB, we understand that this is a major comprehensive work effort that we will be highly involved with from a public engagement process. We anticipate to approach this with the processes that were articulated by the Public Participation Working Group. And we, we employed these same processes during the NSMP, the Neighborhood Speed Mitigation, no, Management Speed Man, sorry, I talked on so many different names, the Neighborhood Speed Management Program. We anticipate using that as a template for how we engage the public around the transportation master plan, including in-person meetings, email, Nextdoor, social media, and then outreach to various local media outlets. So I know our presentation tonight is, is a little bit bundled, and you're going to get it from staff a little unbundled, but that's kind of where TAB is coming from when we talk about the transportation master plan update. I don't know if either of you are going to want to add anything on that before we move on to Vision Zero?
Sorry?
All right, next slide.
Okay.
Okay. So in terms of TAB's thoughts on Vision Zero, we believe that we need to have a continued focus on transportation safety for all modes and all users, and that we need a continued emphasis on sustaining the public engagement around Vision Zero. And this comes from a deep acknowledgement that the, of the importance of public buy-in for any culture change to happen. We also encourage staff to increase focus on engineering and enforcement that reduces speeding. You'll hear more from staff tonight about the four Es. Vision Zero so far has, we, at least from a TAB perspective, has really focused on education, which is fantastic. We'd like to see a stepped-up focus on engineering and enforcement as well. So the final topic for tonight, which is renewed vision for transit. TAB is very concerned about our funding for transit and our partnership with RTD. We don't have a lot of solutions. We have a lot of questions, as I think everybody does. But we do think that, that it might be worthwhile for us to explore regional partnership opportunities to form sustainable funding solutions that support the infrastructure and services along our key commuter corridors. And that may mean just engaging more proactively our neighboring communities and figuring out solutions potentially outside of RTD.
Just for...
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, Jennifer. That was really very concise. Well done. I, I, I just wanted to raise the idea that because, because Vision Zero is sort of new and newly adopted in the city, we tend to be raising it separately. But I just want to emphasize that it is sort of a new way of thinking. Jennifer mentioned culture change and why, you know, your support is so important to, for culture change. And what we're talking about is rethinking about how everyone gets around. And it, it affects all kinds of things like how we view a good trip from one side of town to the next, how we think everyone should be able to move around, and who we prioritize and how we prioritize them. And it means realizing how we've prioritized motor vehicle transit and motor vehicle trips in the past, and need to shift away from that to people moving. And so there's a lot of things in the TMP, for instance, that we'll, we'll be relooking at, we'll be rethinking about, you know, level of service at an F, you'll hear about that. That's about how congested a vehicle, how much congestion a vehicle and a driver in a vehicle encounters. But if we focus more on reducing our single occupancy vehicle trips, even if cars are going slower to accommodate Vision Zero, to accommodate safer travel speeds, we'll achieve the level of service that we need. And so I just want to pull back and say that for a number of reasons, Vision Zero is a very good way for us to reach a number of other goals. Safety and mobility, transit equity. A lot of people who are not in motor vehicles are there because they choose not to. They're, they're using a safer, slower, less congestive mode of transit, walking, biking, public transit, or they can't afford to, right? And these are, or they're too old, or they're too young to drive, or they're disabled. These are the people that we ought to be paying more attention to and giving accommodations to that we haven't in the past. And Vision Zero can, if, if we sort of rethink everything through a lens of Vision Zero, of protecting those more vulnerable users, the very young, the very old, the disabled, the slower, we will probably find our way toward better modes of transit and better and more democratic uses of our public roadway that prioritizes those people and helps us achieve our, our other goals, like reducing greenhouse gas emissions, increasing transit use, that kind of stuff. So Vision Zero should not, in our, as, as we continue to go forward, be a separate thing that we're gauging separately. It helps us guide our more humanitarian, more democratic, more all-encompassing planning for roadways that we really hadn't thought about in, in, previously. And so I really applaud the city for, for adopting Vision Zero, but I don't want it to be a separate thing. It's something that should be affecting every way we look at our, our use of our public roadway and public spaces. Thank you.
Say one thing if that's all right. And I just want to acknowledge Mark McIntyre, the newest TAB member who's joined. I'm Bill Riggler, now the Vice Chair of TAB. Two things. The first is that I want to say this before Mike has the opportunity, but would be happy to partner with the fire department on some fire-breathing apparatus on top of our buses or, or something similar. Oh, sorry. Tanked, tanked. Must be late. Yeah, you know, what do you lose? What do you lose? Yeah, yeah. They'll think it's hilarious. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we would really appreciate TAB's encouragement of increased collaboration between TAB and Planning Board. There are a lot of activities, whether that's on the East Arapahoe Corridor or Colorado and, and 30th, where stronger collaboration makes sense. And we would deeply appreciate your efforts to help bring us together in that way. So far, it's been very challenging to organize those, with the exception of large, large board and commission events that we do. But it just seems that for us to be no longer working in silos on so many areas that really affect issues of housing and transportation, and, and this nexus is really important. So we'd, we'd be grateful for your consideration and support.
Do you talk to, or consult with Planning Board at all on things like transportation demand management?
I mean, those conversations haven't really happened. It's, it's, the efforts have been made, but so far, just the collaboration hasn't been there in the way that I think that we, we would find to be helpful.
So I have a question about Vision Zero on page 51 of the packet, because I also think it's extremely important and should be at the top of kind of all of our lists of discussions around transportation, because injuries and death are, you know, kind of our first charge for public health and safety. So I see that there were 53 serious injury and fatal crashes in 2009. There were 66 serious injury and fatal crashes in 2016, but that is in a yellow category, where I would put that in a red category, because our vision is zero of those, and we're moving in the wrong direction. So I guess I have that question to TAB, but also a comment to council members, that I think if we are going to make that a top-line headline, that we should assess it as seriously deficient at this time. So I'd love feedback on that.
Absolutely agree.
And we will be going into a portion of the presentation where we'll go into that a bit more, so.
So from a process perspective, maybe we should suspend, we're, we're all going to sit here and have this conversation together. So maybe we should let them jump in, and we'll all dialogue together on these three big topics at least. Does that sound a good way to proceed?
Sure. I, I think this, you know, we're doing a lot of stuff on visualization of data and so on. And so I found this graphic to be extremely helpful. It brings kind of everything together in one place. I just want to make sure that we have time to discuss it, because there's several things on here that I think need to be highlighted.
Okay. And you're going to pause after each one?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, they will, go ahead and jump in. Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm Kathleen Brackey. I'm the Go Boulder Manager with the city's transportation group, and really appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation this evening around scoping the 2018-19 transportation master plan update. And, and as we get started, I just think it's a real important to have the reminder about why we need to update the TMP and why now. It's a very important time in transportation and the trends and the technologies and the community changes that we're facing. And the TMP plays a very important role in supporting our broad range of sustainability goals. It certainly supports accessible and connected community, but it has a role to play in all of these different areas in terms of bringing people together and neighborhood livability and economic vitality. So it's a, it's a very important piece that supports all of the other work that we do in the city. And then we also, just as a reminder in terms of what the TMP is, so there's why we do it and what it is. It really sets the vision, the community's vision, for a multimodal transportation system. It identifies our strategic actions, our investment policies and priorities, and then identifies those key measurable objectives that we'll talk more about in terms of how do we guide and measure our progress toward these important goals. And then it's also important to talk about kind of how we do the TMP. And we really emphasize that the TMP is a living document. We update it approximately every five years. And the idea is that with the community and with council and TAB, we set that course for the next decades to come for, and the transportation improvements. And then we include an action plan. We go to work on that. That's what sets our annual work program and our budgeting priorities. And then we check in every two years with the transportation report on progress and see how are we doing, and where are we making progress, and where are we continuing to struggle? And, and each of the TMP, then that information kind of cycles back and helps with the next TMP update. So each transportation master plan builds on the one that came before. And so it's kind of a building blocks approach with, again, with the community in service of those broader community goals. And then this is just a real high-level timeline of this particular TMP update item. We're in kind of the later stages of this assessment and scoping component on the front end. The idea is to check in with, with you all, with TAB, with the community, to make sure we're getting off on this journey on the right foot, and how then that will influence the work that we go to do in more detailed areas over the next year. And then bringing forward for council consideration next year, the updated transportation master plan. And what's pretty exciting about 2019, it's actually will be the 30th anniversary of the transportation master plan. And so I think it's a real commitment to council, to the community, this long history of creating a vision, implementing it over time, adjusting the course as needed, and then continuing to move forward in this thoughtful approach. So as part of the assessment phase and the scoping, we've done a variety of different sort of qualitative and quantitative approaches. We've hosted a variety of events recently, and then again, completed the 2018 Report on Progress in January. These events have been very valuable in providing input from the community in terms of scoping the TMP update, as well as helping us to hear from national practitioners and thought leaders in transportation to help us kind of take, step back and take that broader view and see what are the areas that we should be focusing on, what are the trends that are happening around the country and locally, and how can we apply those in the work that we'll be doing. This is just a quick summary of some of the key messages or the feedback that we received from the national panelists that were here. And really, it comes back to focusing on the community and having a conversation with the community and focusing on people, equity, access, and thinking about how these new types of technologies that are coming forward will help us achieve our goals. It's not about the technology itself. It's how do we use that technology and those trends in service of our community goals for our environmental stewardship, our economic vitality, and neighborhood livability. We, we chose these two pictures to show, I think it's pretty clever in that the idea of autonomous vehicles actually isn't new. It's been around since the 50s. This was put together and shared with us by Jeffrey Tomlin from Nelson-Nygard. And it's, what I find interesting is the picture from before is about how autonomous vehicles would help bring people together. So it's a group of people playing a board game in the car. And then when you look at what the images are coming out today about autonomous vehicles, it's really more about individuals, and they're in the car, but they're not really interacting. It's a very, almost isolated experience. And so as we're thinking about these things, how do we bring forward policies and strategies that are bringing people together and creating a connected community and not the isolation?
I'm going to interrupt. I will just say that panel on the launch was one of the more provocative, interesting panels, panels I've seen on transportation, maybe ever. And I think you filmed it.
Yep.
If anybody's ever can't sleep. If anybody's ever can't sleep, check it out. It was really, yeah, it was, it was very provocative.
Can you tell us where we can find that video?
Yes, it's on the city website for the Transportation Master Plan update. And people can also access it through Be Heard Boulder, which is our new online engagement platform. So you can kind of get there two ways, either through the TMP webpage or through Be Heard And then these are some of the concerns and questions and hopes that the community shared with us that evening, which was, again, we had a lot of interactive activities that people were getting involved in. It was really a great event. And we heard, again, the interest for the community-wide ecopass, the interest in continued commitment for safety, offering additional regional options for travel and supporting the electric vehicles. And we also heard the continued concerns around traffic and noise and how are we maintaining the system so that people can have access year round? The other event that we held was last fall, and this event is actually also taped and available online. And this was the Advanced Mobility event that was held as part of the city's The Future is Here series. And it was actually very, again, thought provoking, not from the standpoint of all the different bells and whistles that are going to be out in the, in the public realm, but how do we use those technologies to work toward more of the positive or utopian aspects or outcomes that could be desired in terms of more shared travel, more information systems, reducing vehicle miles traveled and air quality emissions versus more of the dystopian, which could actually go the other way and increase the amount of traffic and lead to more safety concerns and other things. So we're, again, we're at a very interesting time and a very interesting crossroads and how do we get in front of this to develop those policies and strategies so we can leverage the benefits of the new technology without having the negative consequences? And then here's the report card we were talking about a minute ago. And this is a summary piece from the Transportation Report on Progress. And the idea is it's at a glance, it's kind of looking at those nine measures that we've been tracking over many years and identifying how are we doing? And we recognize that we are making progress in many areas. I would say really the community's making a lot of good progress, particularly Boulder residents that are choosing to walk, bike and take transit for a lot of the local trips. But we are continuing to struggle and we have a lot more work to do in these areas, including regional travel and also the safety goals and our Vision Zero goals. So we recognize that and appreciate the feedback on this. In addition, it identifies we have more work to do on vehicle miles traveled. And this is kind of a image around how Boulder has done a great job, you know, holding steady on vehicle miles traveled over the last several decades. And this was a goal of some of the early Transportation Master Plans was that basically traffic wouldn't get any worse. We would hold vehicle miles traveled at 1994 levels. And we've done a good job with that. But what we're seeing the last several years is that that number is starting to creep up. And it's creeping up not only regionally, but also locally. And so through this TMP update, what are we doing to help influence that slope of the line and make more significant progress so we can be reducing vehicle miles traveled and accomplish our transportation goals as well as our climate commitment goals? And so that leads, all of that assessment piece leads to the focus areas that we've identified to go to work on as part of this particular TMP update. There's more details about this that is provided in your attachment C, and we have large copies of those up here too, just for easier reference. But each of these are important. They're all interconnected. And I'd like to start with the Complete Streets focus area. There's a lot to go to work on in this particular area. And again, the idea is that our streets are for people and they're for people using all modes of transportation at all ages and stages of life. And how are we continuing to advance our Complete Streets policies and performance measures so that we're making sure that we are creating that future transportation system that is safe and connected and accessible for all? The next focus area is our regional travel focus area. We need to continue to work with our agency partners and our neighboring communities. Really appreciate all of the work by council and Mayor Jones for the work on behalf of the Mayors and Commissioners Coalition. Each of these corridors are challenging in and of themselves, and we're bringing this forward as a network of mobility and to connect Boulder with our surrounding communities and use the US 36 corridor as a model so that it includes all of those elements, the bus rapid transit, the commuter bikeway and the managed lanes. A very important focus area for this particular TMP update is our Transportation Demand Management area. And it's been mentioned earlier this evening. Last year, we created the Access Management and Parking Strategy Document, which was very helpful and multiple years of work kind of coming together. We need to keep that momentum going and use the guiding principles that came out of AMPs and the action items to move forward with this parking reform. And again, it's an integrated piece of providing more options and more choice for the community. And also, this particular focus area will be where we're kind of the umbrella for the advanced mobility policy discussion. So the new technology, the trends, mobility as a service, that's really, it's something that's already here. People are already doing that through transportation network companies, but we're just seeing that that's going to continue to grow and be a more and more popular choice. And so what are the policy implications from that? And then transportation funding. You've talked a lot about that this evening with the, with all of the funding conversations. And, you know, locally, again, we are struggling with our projected sales tax revenue. And the other piece of that is not just the, the amount of funding and the purchasing power, but it's also the realization that more and more of the budget is needed to maintain the base system. So as Mike said, that ongoing operations and maintenance is, you know, approaching 80% of the budget, which then creates less amount of funding available to do the enhancements. And, you know, Boulder's not alone in this. RTD is facing significant financial challenges and not able to deliver the existing service today nor be able to deliver the service of the future. So again, we'll be talking more about the details on that. But CDOT is facing challenges at the state level and then certainly a lot of uncertain, well, certainly uncertainty at the federal level. And things are changing and we really need to use this particular TMP update to identify new potential funding mechanisms, diversify the funding sources that we have, and look at potential user fees so that we can be, again, kind of connecting the economics of transportation and looking at how do we incentivize or disincentivize options and choices so that the user experience is tied to the revenue. I want to keep going in the interest of time. One of our, our last focus areas is very important. It's really where we bring together our transportation policies and connect them with, across the organization, with land use, with urban design, with our climate commitment goals. And it's about placemaking and really coming together in these collaborative ways. And we've been very successful over the last several years in our Chautauqua Access Management Plan, all of the great things that are happening at Boulder Junction. And so this TMP update will be the opportunity to identify what that next generation looks like and where we can go to work together on those issues for the future. These are the measurable objectives, again, that they inform our report on progress. I included this information because this was the list that came out of the 2014 TMP. And the new, the green objectives were actually added as part of that process. That's when we added the Vision Zero safety goal. We added the 15-minute neighborhood walkability goal and the vehicle miles traveled. So the opportunity that's in front of us is how do we look at this list today and say, are there things there that should be changed or added or done differently in the future? So that's another part of the plan update process. And certainly, the foundation of all of this work is a community engagement process. It's very extensive. Again, it takes to heart the advice and suggestions from TAB, from the community, so that there's a combination of ways that people can get involved. Hands-on, the picture on the left is from the launch event, and we have a large aerial map. And people are putting stickies down, they're writing on it saying, these are the places I love to, you know, walk or bike or get around town. And then these are the places that are hard for me. And how do we go to work on making those better? And it's a great conversation starter for all ages. And then obviously tying this, all of these strategies to the city's new community engagement framework and the recommendations from the Public Participation Working Group. And it's a combination of in-person and online opportunities so that it's easy for people to get involved and to stay involved throughout the process. And so in terms of next steps, again, there's much to go to work on here. We appreciate the feedback from this evening and we will refine our work and move forward and continue the check-ins with TAB on a monthly basis and then with council at the key milestones. We'll be back to see you again in the fall. And an important thing I wanted to mention here is that fortunately, the city is not the only one updating their Transportation Master Plan at this time. Boulder County is, CU Boulder is updating theirs and the city of Lewisville and the city of Longmont just recently updated theirs. So it's a great way where we're all doing this work together and being able to identify those opportunities where we can collaborate with our regional neighbors. So some of the key takeaways, there's, again, there's a lot here. Each of these focus areas are very important. And most of all, they're all interconnected. They're not independent slices. They're all, they all weave together to create that transportation system vision. And then the foundation, again, is the community engagement as we go forward. And that our intent is that each phase of the TMP update will have a customized or tailored approach to the community engagement so that it can be very specific to the particular topic areas. So with that, for this section, we're very interested in council's feedback on the proposed focus areas for the TMP and specific suggestions you may have for the community engagement process.
And just as a cheat sheet, the attachment that's in your packet is really the staff proposal. So with that, we'll turn it over.
I do have one. This is really minor. I know Vision Zero is included in Complete Streets, but given how everybody is focused on it, I don't know that you might want to not call that out in as part of the focus area name, Complete Streets, you know, slash Vision Zero.
Just put it in the title.
I would.
Okay.
I know that's very minor, but I think we're really trying to make sure it remains front and center. And I think everybody's going to be looking for it and it's, I think, that important.
Yeah, great.
Can I just piggyback? And, yeah, I don't know exactly what the wording is, but I mean, you can, for example, you could build a complete street that was focused on throughput and not on safety. Right? So I think it's important to have in that title that Vision Zero is really part of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this up.
So I mean, I want to start at the goal level. I mean, I view these as kind of the work plan to get to the goals, right? And I think the first question is, are the goals right? And I just have a couple of thoughts. I understand why you have the VMT in red and highlighted as a real problem, and I agree with that because we're trying to make a, I'm sorry, page 51, it's the report card. And I think the reason that we care about the report card is not necessarily to go on tonight about how we're doing or not doing, but are the goals right and are, you know, are the assessments right of what's going on? And so VMT, we're trying to reduce and we're not. And so that obviously red is appropriate for that, and I think that's a good goal. And most of these goals are really appropriate. I think Vision Zero, however we think about it, should be at the top. I mean, to the extent that these things matter and people look first at things at the top. I think we want that one as a lead personally, and I think it should be red. I mean, I really do think that that's an important thing because as these guys just said about putting it in kind of the headline of Complete Streets, I also think in this case, if this is going to be what the community's going to engage on and how they're going to see goals in a really concise place, I think that I would move Vision Zero up and make it red. And I want to bring up how little control I am afraid that TAB has on the goal for increase the share of residents living in complete walkable neighborhoods to 80%. I mean, there is a component of interconnectivity and so on, but that is largely implicated by planning and land use, right? And zoning and, and the decisions in many cases are made by Planning Board as to whether and council, as to whether there will be the components of a walkable neighborhood in place that you could interconnect to. So I would question how that one is going to really be greatly affected. I think it's more affected, the goal's fine. I mean, I actually appreciate the goal. I'm just not sure, that one is so heavily weighted by planning and, and land use that I'm not sure if it belongs at the same level as the rest of these where I think transportation and TAB really, on almost all of these, is kind of the lead. So that's just a comment.
Can I ask a follow-up question about that, Sam? And when measuring this goal, do you purely look at, say, services near residents? Or do you also look at the transportation network in between those things? So for example, if we improve connectivity and add more multi-use paths, does that get more people near walkable neighborhoods?
Yes, it's both.
It's both.
It's the destination and the facility. So it...
So we have influence on part of it, I guess.
That's what I would say. This is a, this is the one where I think transportation has the least control of the outcome. That's why I wanted to flag that. And to some extent, it's going in the wrong direction as well. It's moving in the wrong direction and it's nowhere near the goal. So I wouldn't necessarily color it red, but it, it's one of those where we have an ambitious goal and we're moving in the wrong direction, whatever we want to do with that.
From a TAB perspective then, and based, you know, back to Bill's point about collaboration with Planning Board, do we know if Planning Board has a comparable goal? And should they? Because they're the only ones that can accomplish it.
So maybe to help clarify, so this goal had been identified in the 2014 TMP and it's measured through GIS mapping. And then as part of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, it's one of the goals that got rolled up from the new TMP into the comp plan. So it's, it's an example of how the TMP and the comp plan work together, kind of in iterative areas. And so, but you're right, it does get at the point, it's measuring both of those things and they need to come together.
And in the comp plan, is it a policy that just says, we shall strive, something like, we shall strive for more people living in?
Right, and support the...
I don't think it's as specific as 80%, is it?
No.
So Randall, what, how specific is the reference? Because, so the idea was that this informed that, there's the, the policy list for the integration of transportation and land use, but we'll find out for you.
Well, I mean, this gets right back to the point of the integration between transportation and planning, which Bill brought up, and I think that's right. On the planning side of the house, I think you see more mixed use, you know, and lots of support for mixed use in order to get to this goal. But I don't know that there's a number goal that's in mind. And zoning has a lot to do with this, right? And so that doesn't come about all the time. A lot of times, that's on a project by project basis. And similarly, doing the transportation demand management is often on a project by project basis, brought forward by planning and transportation staff, but to the Planning Board on a project by project basis. So when you talk about collaboration with Planning Board, I think one way would be a goal like this, but another would be that, that perhaps TAB look at what transportation's recommending on the project basis for TDM, right? Because I'm sure it wouldn't hurt planning's feelings to have TAB say, here's what we think on the TDM plan and then have that be part of what their input is for their site plan review. So anyhow, just a couple of thoughts on that.
Go ahead.
Just if I may, I think that's exactly right. I think that process would be facilitated with council's imprimatur, though, so.
What do you need from us?
You don't see those.
Your imprimatur?
That would be more, I think that could be done almost at the staff level if Planning Board agreed with you. I'm not sure that we would have to weigh in if you worked with Planning Board and said, yeah, do we want to do this? Staff, can you do it? You know, how much trouble would it be to run the TDM part of a, of a proposed site plan passed TAB for comment that would then go as part of the application to Planning Board? So...
At least projects of a certain size.
Yeah, site plan review kind of makes them of a certain size.
And one of the items on the, in the AMP's work plan is to, is to actually develop a, a more robust TDM program that's actually more defined instead of the negotiated process that currently occurs during site review. So that's one of the things that will be coming forward this year is to better define those TDM requirements, so.
Yeah, I think that's an idea really worth exploring. I would just say, I think the size threshold is also important because it's not just size that kicks you into site review. So you can have small site review projects too. Just one other thought on... Just one other thought on the goals, so the, I know last time you added some additional ones and I'd encourage you this time around to consider adding maybe some additional goals around the Vision Zero program. So right now, the, the, the goal is about how many injuries and deaths are. And of course, that's the most important thing, right? But we could also have goals about how our engineering and our street systems are moving forward in ways that can help us accomplish that goal. So it might be handy to have a goal or two as well about how we're implementing techniques that then accomplish reducing those.
Right.
Yeah, well, again, engineering, so we'll, one that, like a leading pedestrian interval at stoplights, for example, which we don't have very many of, you know, so something that, or my, my favorite thing, I'll talk a little bit more about later, is bike boulevards, you know, so where you have a continuous corridor of, with engineering treatments than, not just a sign, but engineering treatments that, that give you a good place to bike. So I think partly would depend on some of the initiatives that you come up with as part of this TMP, so I don't want to predetermine that, but, but as you move through this, to think about additional measurable goals that you could add to the TMP as part of this process.
And I want to just tack on to that because I think that's a great point. If you put goals in, you could measure it in miles of, you know, whatever engineered bike lane, you could measure it in number of stoplights that have the leading walk sign, you could measure it in number of underpasses and number of, you know, pedestrian walkways that are added. Because I think those, you know, you set goals based on that and then see if you get there. Because I like these because they're so measurable and they're dashboard-like and you either are moving in the right direction or not.
There is also the aspect, though, you did talk about it being a culture change. And that's at the start of the Vision Zero. And there was a time when bicycles weren't that popular in, in the Netherlands. That was, that was a culture change. And I'm wondering how, if in the study session that's coming up, you'll be also looking at, in terms of transportation demand management, about fees and costs for parking and parking spaces, structures, et cetera, all of that. And that you'll be getting into that. So we'll be able to see some of the sticks as well as maybe some of the carrots.
Right, for sure. And of course, one of the interesting challenges that this accelerated changes around how we get around really also points out that some of our traditional tools might have to change. And so if the future looks like we don't own cars and we don't drive them and we don't park them, we just dial them up and they come to our door and then they take us to where we want to go, the parking tool would be basically rendered useless. And so, and so therein lies some of the challenges about how we would get around managing demand in, in a future where we're not parking cars anymore. So just another interesting challenge going forward.
One of the, one of the carrots in that as well, and one of Bob's favorite places, Palo Alto, is actually paying, yeah, thank you, Sam, is, is that people are actually paid not to drive and not to park. And that, given the options, that, one of the carrots, that they will take that and leave the car at home with some of these SOVs in terms of in commuting.
Yep, and that's a great example. We are doing that on a smaller scale basis currently in the downtown and civic area, but that could be one of the, again, the policy areas going forward for TDM and how could that be expanded in other areas. I should have mentioned as part of the next steps that we would be bringing, will be bringing forward an information packet for you in May on all of these different AMPs topics. So you'll get a chance to kind of see those as a package, too, and they're all obviously connected.
And if I could just make one more comment on that, there was recently, I can't remember the numbers, but it was the cost of the subsidy for the parking places, if, I'm going to say this hotel goes through up on the corner of Broadway and University, is something like, the city's going to be paying a subsidy of something like $78,000 per space, subsidy that's overlying what the cost will be. So in places like that as well, it'd be interesting to hear TAB weigh in. These are policy areas, again.
Yeah, and if I may just respond to that, I feel like this is another area of collaboration between TAB with the DMC and other groups, especially as we look at declining retail sales tax, you know, the downtown retail initiative that's about to be launched with the $75,000 fund. So as we look at parking fees and structures, I think that, again, this is another area where we want to break out of our silos and kind of look at the whole chessboard to see what's going to work, what's going to benefit the businesses, what's going to achieve our, our transportation priorities.
Great, yeah.
And, and again, that raises the idea of folding in a lot of land use and planning about how, how these, these areas are going to be used in the future, how they're used now, how we think that's going to change. And it's an opportunity in the corridor studies to be a little bit broader than they are. Like right now, we're going to hear about, the corridor studies are really about the roadway. And it's a little unfortunate on Easter Apoh, I think that there was some thought early on in the process to looking at changing land use patterns and, you know, land management in Easter Apoh. And it just got too hairy and too scary and so we divorced it from what is the roadway going to look like? And I think that with better direction from council and sort of political will, too, to have those hard discussions about why the vehicles and the people are going to be moving around and what they're going to be doing in terms of what that land use is going to look like, it's going to really help us in places, planning North Broadway, planning a whole bunch of parts of the city that are really parts of the city now, but are going to be changing in ways that we should be really thinking about land, land use in connection with transportation.
Tila, two words, sub-community planning.
Me, too, it.
It's only, it's in the queue.
It is in the queue and there's someone being hired, a staff member being hired, just to focus specifically on that. I think the reason that the Easter Apoh thing kind of ran into a buzzsaw is partly because it was not engaging as broadly around. And so, again, we're going to try it and see.
With the community.
All right.
All right, Bill. All right, good evening. Bill Cowan, I'm the city's principal traffic engineer, and I'll be speaking this evening to you about our Vision Zero goal. Theoretically, we're going to start with a Vision Zero video.
Yep, go for the arrow, the down one.
All right.
In 2016, our community was shaken by over 3,000 collisions, resulting in 59 serious injuries and seven fatalities. Among those seriously injured were 27 cyclists, 12 pedestrians, and 20 motorists. In the fatal crashes, Boulder lost a daughter, a father, a wife, and a grandmother. We are more than just numbers. We are individuals. We are a community. We need to look out for one another and make our streets safer. Inspired by the belief that a single traffic-related fatality is one too many, the city of Boulder joined the ranks of leading-edge cities committed to safer streets and adopted Vision Zero. Vision Zero programs across the United States operate under the principle that traffic deaths and severe injuries are both preventable and unacceptable, and that all of us should be able to get around safely on our streets. There are many factors that contribute to safe mobility, including roadway design, speeds, enforcement, behaviors, technology, and policies. With Vision Zero, our city is committed to addressing all these factors in order to achieve the bold vision of zero traffic-related fatalities and severe injuries. All of us have a role to play in Vision Zero. Whether we're driving, biking, or walking, we all need to avoid distractions, be mindful, stay sober, and look out for one another. Together, we can make our streets safer.
So that is a video that can be found on our Vision Zero website as part of our educational campaign. In 2014, the city adopted the Vision Zero goal. And we, in doing so, we joined a growing number of communities that have adopted this goal and are working to achieve it together. And we appreciate being a part of that community because it certainly will take efforts from all the different communities working on this to ultimately achieve Vision Zero in our country. One thing we know about solving or eliminating serious injury and fatal crashes is that we will need to know where they are occurring and why they are occurring currently. And to do this, our staff evaluates crash trends, determines what type of mitigation might be appropriate to mitigate those trends, implements that. And that information is codified in our Transportation Safe Streets Boulder Report. And this information is just some of the findings that were included in that. Key to Vision Zero is that bicycle and pedestrians are, represent only 8% of total collisions, but represent 60% of the severe crashes that we're trying to eliminate with Vision Zero. Also that impairment, impaired people, again, represent only 3% of the total collisions, but represent 38% of the fatalities. This is key Vision Zero information and basically drives our work program going forward. And to try and mitigate this, as previously has been discussed, we use a four E approach, engineering, education, enforcement, and evaluation. And I'll talk about the role that each of these play. These graphics describe top collision locations in the city from the last Safe Streets Boulder Report. These are, of course, in the report. They include the top locations for motor vehicle collisions as well as the top locations involving bicycles and pedestrians. These are locations where a large amount of crashes have been occurring and where if we did not take action, we would expect large numbers of crashes to continue to occur. In each of these locations, we've identified mitigation in the Safe Streets Boulder Report and that mitigation has been implemented. Now, as I talk about the different E strategies, I'll start with engineering because engineering is a very important strategy. How we design, operate, and maintain our streets is certainly key to being able to move people safely upon them. Some of the strategies that we have been using to try and mitigate crashes include the way that we operate our traffic signals, specifically left turn phasing, leading pedestrian intervals, and restrictions of right turns on red. Also, green pavement markings, specifically at places where there would be conflict between bikes and turning traffic. And then a variety of pavement markings and signs that are there to remind people of their responsibilities at certain conflict points. Here are some examples, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. I should note that we have installed 97 distinct engineering improvements in the past two years at 73 specific locations. I think that this speaks to the role that engineering has played in our Vision Zero. That includes traffic signal modifications at 23 different intersections, green pavement markings at 34 different locations. And these are some of the signs and pavement markings that we'll be using. And if you, you know, look carefully at them, you can see that they target all modes of transportation, basically depending upon what the type of behavior is that we're trying We certainly have identified that we need to take a look at our traffic signal practices. For years that we have operated our traffic signals to provide what we thought was a combination of safe and efficient travel, and again, using national standards for determining those criteria. In the Vision Zero environment, those standards are not going to be satisfactory. And so we need to look critically at the way we operate our traffic signal practices. We've done so. Hopefully, you've seen the link in the memo that speaks to the work that we've done on that to date. The areas that we're specifically targeting are left turn phasing, the way that we determine left turn phasing, leading pedestrian interval use, and restrictions of right turn on red. And we've looked at the traffic signal practices, or lack thereof, in numerous pure cities around the country and are using that to inform the development of our traffic signal practices. It's our intention to complete that work this year and be operating under those new practices at that time. Ma'am?
Can I ask you a question about the blinking yellow arrow? Is this a best practice, a new practice? I still think there's a lot of confusion for people over what it means the other lane is doing.
Yep.
And so I guess I'm still confused whether, what are our intentions around that? And can you just talk about that?
Absolutely. And actually, our traffic signal operations engineer is here and I'm going to let him address that question.
Should I step to the microphone?
All right, thank you, Bill.
Good evening. I'm Joe Paulson, the transportation engineer for signals and lighting. And so the flashing yellow arrow display is basically a better mousetrap as determined by years of research by the Federal Highway Administration, both in a lot of, you know, test lab environment and then ultimately in deployments in several states across the United States. And what they found in comparing the experience of left turn crashes under the traditional circular green display for what we call a permissive left turn, where you're allowed to turn left, but you have to yield to any conflicting traffic, what they found is simply by changing the display from the circular green, which everybody has had and experienced for decades, to the flashing yellow arrow, that the number of crashes was reduced. And that was a very consistent finding over, again, multiple years in multiple states. And the, the extent of the reduction was significant enough that the federal government changed the national standard in the manual and uniform traffic control devices to using the flashing yellow arrow display. And so it is now the adopted national standard. It's no longer an experiment like it was when we started using them in 2004. It is going forward, the national standard. So you will see them in more and more communities throughout the metropolitan area going forward. Any new construction that we do, we use the yellow arrow and we're retrofitting them on a prioritized basis. And there is certainly some confusion, as with any new and changed device. What the research found is that by and large, the confusion that exists results in mistakes that they would categorize as safe mistakes. So if you look at the flashing yellow arrow and you're not sure what it means, if you decide, well, maybe that means I can't go, that's a mistake, but it's a safe mistake. Nobody gets hurt. What the research found is the circular green ball, after decades of use, people would look at it, they would see green, they would see it's over the left turn lane, and they would say, "Oh, it's green. Green means go." I think that means I'm allowed to turn left now. And that's a mistake and it's a dangerous mistake because you put yourself and others in harm's way.
I just wanted to point out, I forget if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, TAB reviewed a sort of a draft video. There's a number of videos like what you saw that are shorter and targeted on particular behaviors, but there is one that they're, that they're working on right now to explain what every road user is supposed to interpret the flashing yellow as, because there is a lot of confusion out there. You're right. But that is something they've already thought about, they're working on, and hopefully you'll see that quite soon.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was going to go with it because the first time I saw it, it confused me pretty, you know, I was like, I've never seen this indication before. So what does that mean? And there was no signage, there was no instruction, you know, and so it took a while to kind of figure it out. And we've received, I don't know if you get the emails, but we've been getting pretty consistent emails as they're being more widely adopted at intersections where people just don't know what to do. And they, you know, I understand the theory of the safe mistake, but there have been others who have interpreted it to mean, "I can go now." You know, because, what's that?
Or hurry up.
Yeah, or hurry up, right, right. Because they're thinking of it as they've typically seen the yellow and the transition from the green and they think, "Okay, cool, I can do the last left turn before the light goes red." So I think education is going to be critical if this is actually to, to roll out everywhere because, yeah, decades, people have been used to a particular way. And I don't know if there's signage that you can do or what other cities have done.
Right, there is signage. When the, when the FHWA came out with the revised practice and the requirement that this, this display be used, they did not recommend the use of instructional signing, but they did leave it as optional. And some communities, including Longmont, if you spend any time there, they chose to use instructional signing. We're currently looking at research to see if there is a measurable benefit from the use of the signing because it's not without cost. And the biggest cost isn't the fabrication and installation, it's the load on the mastarm and it's the space that's taken up that could be used for something else, and it's the visual- And it's the visual clutter in the environment that we're concerned about, that we don't want to use something unnecessarily. But if there is value that we can identify with the use of the sign, we're considering using it.
It could be temporary, right? It could be something that lasted for a few years until people really kind of got into the know and the habit. I worry as much about bicyclists misinterpreting that, who are making a left turn, as I do about cars, because, you know, a T-bone is not a good accident for automobile, but it's really bad for cyclists, so.
Yeah. So, I appreciate what you're saying. I still think the community isn't, well, I guess there's a culture change that needs to happen, but it hasn't happened yet. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I think we have another.
Well, I'm not sure who this is for, but just while we're talking about signalization, question about a bike signal. We just have one or two that I know of in the city. But as we, where we've implemented leading pedestrian intervals, those are for bikes as well, right? I mean, aren't you allowed or not to, seems like you should be, as a bike, to go before the cars do as well? And can we represent that with a bike signal?
All right. Great question. So, where you see a leading pedestrian interval, it is being provided by the pedestrian indication.
Right.
And that controls the entry into the crosswalk area of an intersection by pedestrians or by cyclists acting as pedestrians using that facility and entering the crosswalk. So, certainly, a cyclist on a multi-use path that's entering a crosswalk, they get the benefit and the advantage of that leading pedestrian interval as well. The bicycle display, as currently identified and allowed for use in the manual and uniform traffic control devices, is specifically targeted for situations where there is a separate distinct movement that cyclists can make that the other vehicular traffic cannot make. And they specifically, by the language, preclude the use of the bicycle indication for providing what we would call a leading bicycle interval. So, at this time, that's not an available tool in our toolkit as, as defined by the federal government. There is a discussion in the, in the engineering community about whether that limitation is appropriate and whether it should be expanded to be able to be used for things like a leading bicycle interval. And if that comes to pass, then we would consider that as another tool in our toolbox.
Are those requirements, the, when you're talking about the manual there, is that a requirement?
It's a shall.
Yeah, it's a shall, and it's, yeah, and it's an adopted national standard.
Okay. So, there's no, there's no flexibility on that sort of thing?
Correct.
So, I'll drop this in a second, but how do you, if the, if you get a leading pedestrian interval with a walk sign, how do you, as a cyclist, know that you're allowed to proceed?
So, if you are a cyclist, again, where you might encounter on a crosswalk, on a multi-use path, if you're riding along, the display that is available to you as you come up to an intersection at the crosswalk is the pedestrian indication that is across the street pointed at you. And so, cyclists have learned through experience that that's the message that's being conveyed to you. So, when you're riding on a multi-use path, you're looking at the pedestrian indication. When you're riding in the street, in a bike lane or otherwise on the street, you're looking at the vehicular indication. So, it's different rules of engagement for targeting different audiences.
Thank you.
And just quickly, Barry, what is the speed limit for bicycles entering those crosswalks?
Eight miles per hour.
Eight is great.
Thank you. Thank you. And do we have specific goals around pedestrian leading intervals?
So, we're developing, as we, as we document and refine and update our practices, we are working right now on defining in what areas and situations we think they're an appropriate tool, and also the specifics of how will they be deployed. Currently, we have them in a half a dozen locations, and currently, we all, we use at all of them a three-second leading interval. So, you have a three-second head start before any other vehicular display goes green. Practices around the country vary. Most studies are recommending an interval from three to seven seconds. Others are recommending in certain cases, they be longer. There's a lot of different practices being used for where they should be used. And so, we're taking a look at those other practices to determine what makes sense for us.
Okay. It does seem to me, you know, especially at the most dangerous intersections, that sooner rather than later would be good, especially, you know, high pedestrian volume, like, you know, trying to cross Canyon near the, whatever that is, near McGuckins. You know, those kind of things where there's a lot going on and it feels really dangerous. Anyhow, I guess I would just encourage us to get on with deploying those.
Right. And I would say that we have been, as we've been developing the updated signal practices, we have been continuing to look at the lessons learned from the last Safe Streets Boulder Report and current conditions. And so, we've actually been adding a few. We're not freezing all, you know, engineering activity around signal operation while we conduct the, the practice update. We've been deploying them in new locations.
Okay. Anything else on signals?
I really like the leading pedestrian indicator. I mean, I think it is, it's just a reprogramming. It's very effective, you know? As I've seen some of them come in, I've been like, hey, cool, you know? It's very clear that you shouldn't be thinking that you're going to make a right turn or anything like that when they get the, the walk, you know, early. That really helps, you know, let a motorist know what is appropriate at a time. The other comment I'll make is like the light that's at Colorado and Folsom that has the red arrow for the right turn, you know? That is a really appropriate way, I think, to block or signage, because changing people's practice, who have gotten very used to making right turns on red, may be hard. But when you see the, the light or the signage that says no right turn on red, that's super clear. And it's like, even if we did that a lot of places, I would still think it would be useful for folks coming into Boulder from out of town to be able to be super clear on what they need to do at that right turn.
All right. Thank you.
We better let you keep going.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
Just a couple of clarifying points. The, I want to be clear that when we're talking about left turn phasing, that's not a question of whether we use or don't use flashing yellow arrows. It's really more a question of, do we operate permissively with left turn, with flashing yellow arrows, or do we operate in this protected fashion with red arrows? That's really more the, what we think will move the bar on Vision Zero, is that distinction. And then, as far as your, your question about the bike indicators, the, the other thing I would offer is that we do, I mean, we're obviously, we're, understand the MUTCD constraints around that, but we do think that there may be some ways that we can accomplish something quite similar using green pavement marking, where we can extend the place where a bike would rest and wait for their light ahead of the crosswalk and at a place where a vehicle could see them, a little bit like a bike box, but instead projecting them past the, the crosswalk. All right. So, traffic signal practices, I think we got that covered. This is a story map that you would find on our Vision Zero website. This is, this shows all of the different engineering treatments that we've implemented pertaining to Vision Zero in the past two years. There is a story map like this for each of the other E strategies as well, education and enforcement. Enforcement is important, and one of the things that we collaborate with the Police Department on, one of our premier collaborations, is our Heads Up campaign that is a crosswalk safety program. It's a combination of an education and enforcement. It's grant-funded through the state, and it's something that we pursue and have received grant funding for each year. It targets, of course, the drivers who are not yielding to bikes and pedestrians in the crosswalk, but it also focuses on bikes and pedestrians and their use of the crosswalk, again, with a goal of everybody understanding how to both safely and legally use a crosswalk. Photo enforcement is also a very important enforcement component. We've got eight red light camera locations, two photo radar vans, and that program has been in operation for 20 years. We're one of the first communities to be doing that in Colorado. And then, we track and support safety legislation alongside the Police Department. Examples of that include things pertaining to distracted driving, laws pertaining to distracted driving, which, of course, we would support being more severe and with stiffer penalties, or legislation that is, seems to come up every year that is trying to dismantle the opportunity to do photo enforcement, which, of course, we oppose.
I mean, that's an important one. We cover that, the Legislative Subcommittee, a lot. Every year, they're trying to roll that back, and we're lucky that Lincoln Looper vetoed a bill a couple of years ago on that. But, I mean, I don't know why, because the, the numbers are so clear that that is a very helpful tool in the toolbox. So, just to comment to Council, so you know that that program is always under attack.
And we do have pretty strong numbers as it pertains to crash reduction. Yeah. Education is also an important tool, and, and I say that in the context of there are a lot of behaviors that result in serious injury and fatal crashes that, that are not going to be mitigated by engineering treatments and for which there's going to need to be a change in behavior. And education is one of the key tools to cause that to occur. Again, one of our key programs is this Heads Up Boulder campaign, and through that program, through social media, we have connected with 80,000, more than 80,000 people, made personal contact in the field with 2,500 people, and have issued over 200 citations and warnings associated with that, that program. Lighten Up Boulder is a program in which the city, county, and CU have distributed over 13,000 bike lights, obviously to keep people well lit at night. And then, our newest education program has to do with the dangers of impaired and distracted travel for all modes. And this is obviously an issue that has plagued our country for decades, but it's certainly been made more of an imperative with the introduction of new ways in which people can be distracted on the roadways. And it will be something that is a nut that will have to be cracked if we are to succeed at Vision Zero.
Denver, Denver has a great program where there's signs that are lighted that say towards Vision Zero, no more fatalities. Maybe I'm making this up, but it always seems like they're on busy roads as you lead into an intersection.
Variable message boards, I think, yeah.
Yeah. It, it seems like in some of these key areas, with as much outreach as you're doing on social media, et cetera, drivers forget about it. And if, you know, 100 yards away from Folsom and Canyon, there's a lit sign saying, watch for cyclists towards Vision Zero, it could go a long way for an okay price.
Yeah. I saw one of those the other day. It was pretty slick.
Yeah, they're great. I, I definitely find myself being more aware after seeing a sign like that.
Great point, although without the word toward.
Oh, right. That's right. But just Vision Zero. Absolutely.
Here's some examples of the educational outreach material that we use for different educational programs. I'm just going to go through this quickly. Here is some outreach materials associated with our new distracted driving campaign. Here is an example of where we collaborate with RTD to use the back of their buses to outreach around crosswalk safety. Collaborate.
Collaborate with RTD.
By paying them.
Yeah, by paying them. Again, we think that this is a pretty good venue for connecting with people, but we are always looking for better venues, like you mentioned, the variable message boards. Some of the other ideas that we're exploring are using movie theater advertising and seeing if we can get some of our videos, maybe that video that we, that we showed at the beginning played at CU sporting events. In fact, we're going to be meeting with people from CU tomorrow to have that conversation.
You can explain blinking yellow lights to everybody.
Can I just say, I really like the back of the bus because it's while you're driving?
Yeah.
So, it's very topical. I, I didn't see one of those the other day. I saw one of those the other day, and it was, I was like, oh, yeah, I need to be watching what I'm doing. That was very effective.
Instead, I'm reading the bus. Oh. Just kidding.
So, last year, we created our Vision Zero Community Partnership, and this is a group of people that meet periodically and discuss topics associated with Vision Zero and co-create and collaborate on the messages associated with our Vision Zero outreach and, and the implementation of those messages. It includes our Transportation Advisory Board, staff from multiple departments at the city, the county, the state, the school district, CU, and, and community organizations who are interested in this topic as well. And that has been very helpful in generating some ideas. And then, of course, evaluation is important as well. This is how we know where to implement things. It's how we know whether the things we implement are being effective or not. It is being responsive to residents when they contact us and say that they have encountered something that's unsafe. And it is also being proactive in terms of the generation of our, the evaluation and generation of our Safe Streets Report. And with that in mind, just be aware that our 2018 Safe Streets Report is currently underway. We intend to complete that by the end of this year, and that report will include a complete Vision Zero action plan. The, sorry, you looked like you were going to ask a question.
I am, but I'm going to wait till you're done.
Okay. This is some information about the scoping of the 2018 Safe Streets Boulder Report. It builds on the 2016 report, looking at all of the material or information that we included in there for comparison purposes, specifically evaluating crash data from 2015 to 2017. It will involve deeper analysis on certain topics that we identified that, you know, we didn't get everything we needed the first time around. It will also include some new topics, and probably the most important being evaluation of the effectiveness of our mitigation devices to date. So, if you take anything away from this presentation, what I hope it would be is that our approach to implementing Vision Zero is data-driven and action-oriented. We're using data to determine where the crash trends are. We're using data to determine what mitigation to use, whether that mitigation is effective. We're also using data to determine if there are locations that have crash trends, are there other locations in the community that have similar characteristics that would then allow us to adopt a safe systems approach and implement mitigation at those locations before crashes occurred and actually be proactive? Because only by being proactive will we ever move the bar towards Vision Zero. Comprehensive four E strategies are important. We need to be using all of these. It is not, absolutely not the case of using only one or two. And that this is an extremely challenging task, and it will take all of us working together, individually, as a group, multiple communities working together in order to create the change we need and ultimately see the path to Vision Zero. And again, just a reminder, again, the most comprehensive evaluation of our safety to date will be forthcoming in the 2018 Safe Streets Boulder Report, to be completed by the end of this year. And with that, we have this question for City Council.
So, okay, so I have two things, and then you, can I, just that we know that there's roads coming into Boulder where we have some sketchy, we have some fatalities happening like on J Road, which is not, it may be strictly, I mean, technically right outside our city limits, but are very relevant.
It's not in the city of Boulder, but it's close.
Yeah, close enough that I think that we need to take them on in terms of partnering to county to make that a priority, given just that bike commuters are trying to use it, and it's a really scary place. So, I'll just throw that out there, is to me that if it's right outside town and it's relevant to people commuting into town, that that should be close enough for us to make it a priority?
We have an extremely close relationship with Boulder County staff. They, we collaborate with them all the time. They give us their opinions on what we should be doing in the city. We give them our opinions about what they should be doing in the county as well. And we certainly have had conversations about J Road.
Excellent. I just think it should be a priority. And then, everybody wants to weigh in on this one?
I want to piggyback in on that, just real quickly to say that if it's used as a commuting place between gun barrel and the city, it's definitely ours, as well as the county's, in my opinion.
So, if there's anything we can do to help support telling them what to do? No, just kidding. And then, my understanding is design construction standards that kind of get at the system change you're talking about, or system improvement? Is that underway, that we're using the most updated ones?
Are you referencing the city's design and construction standards?
Yeah, I switched topics.
Yeah. So, I think our Public Works Director sent out an email about that earlier today.
Was that, okay. I just wanted, I heard it was in the Q.
And there are some changes that are And there are some changes that are anticipated to be worked on this year. There's also a fair amount of flexibility in the way that those design and construction standards can be applied. So there, I think that it's, well, I would just say that there's a fair amount of flexibility. So I'm, I'm not sure that the issue so much is that we have the wrong standards, is that we just need to be having dialogues about where they, that flexibility should be applied.
Okay, fair enough. I do think looking at things systemically is great. Okay, real quick, we have a queue. We're going to go quickly. Bob, you were up. Bill, who else is in the queue here? And Aaron?
Bill, I know a lot of the cities that have Vision Zero programs have found that the most effective tool reducing injuries and fatalities is speed limit reductions. I think they've found that that's the most effective tool, and that kind of falls both in your engineering and your enforcement area. And that, of course, increases response time, but also decreases the likelihood of fatality or serves injury. Where are we on speed reductions as part of this program?
Yeah. So I guess I would question what you just said.
Which part?
I'm not sure that there is communities that are saying that they have reduced speeds, speed limits, and then consequently have reduced speeds, and then consequently have decreased serious injury and fatal crashes.
I'll send you a really powerful report from New York City. Yeah, I mean, I think it was 2016, 2017, reduction of fatality. They lowered all speed limits to 25 miles an hour throughout the city. Fatalities reduced from 184 to 101. So.
Right. And I think that one of the things that Bill points out is that, from our perspective, changing the speed limit does not change the operational speed of the vehicles. As a matter of fact, there's a great deal of evidence that indicates that how fast people travel is primarily influenced by the environment that they're driving through. So is it constrained? Is, and so just the mere act of changing the speed limit does not.
That's why I said there was two Es, engineering and there's enforcement.
Right.
And the cities that have done this and have realized tremendous benefits have stepped up their enforcement. So it's not just simply posting a sign. It's posting a sign and then changing behavior.
Right. And for instance, we have our own on-the-street experiment in that we lowered the speed limit on baseline, and we've actually been very aggressively enforcing that lower speed limit. And interestingly, even though we've issued many, many tickets, the overall operational speeds, at least to date, after how many, six months or so, still remain at the same level. And so I think that that points out one of the significant challenges that we have. And one of the things that we have been really successful at is, for instance, many, many years ago, we changed our residential street standards. And so streets that used to be 36 feet wide now are generally 30 or 32 feet wide. And when you see those types of environments, you really do see a significant change in the operational speed. So when you go to neighborhoods like Dakota or Holiday, you'll see very different speed profiles. And so I think that does point out that one of the key tools is build it right in the first place.
Yep.
And you really do start to generate the types of speeds that you're in search of that do generate greater.
No, I agree with this engineering, but I guess I'd like to understand then why cities have been, why other cities have been successful in reducing their speed limits, both by law, but in practice, and we're not able to. I guess I'd like to understand why, why we can't.
And I think what we're saying is our ultimate objective is to slow the cars down. And so what we think it takes is more than just changing the number. And I think you pointed that out, too, so.
The only other thing I would say is that, again, with a goal of reducing serious injury and fatal crashes, specific Vision Zero goal, we would need to be looking at where those crashes are occurring. And predominantly, they're not occurring on our residential streets, not occurring on our 25 mile an hour streets. They're occurring on our arterial roadways. And again, I don't discount what you're saying about speed. Speed kills, and I mean, that's just physics. But we would need to be able to slow people down on our arterial roadways and our heavy collector roadways in order to be making advances in the Vision Zero.
I'll send you a report on Queens Boulevard, which is an arterial roadway with the speed limit was 50 miles an hour. So it's like Arapaho, you know? And they've gone from, I can't remember whether the number was seven or 12 a year to zero a year by reducing. So it's in the speed on that roadway? On that roadway, yeah. So there are examples that are comparable to what we have.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've held several hearings, both public and informal, on just the spate of injuries that have occurred to Boulder-based cyclists on J Road, on Diagonal, and also on 36 between Boulder and Lyons. And we know from the somewhat outdated, or sorry, older data, we've had difficulty getting up-to-date data from CDOT just based on their collection methodologies, but also anecdotally that people are terrified, and it's not simply a matter of speed. It's also a matter of texting while driving, impaired driving. I think you all remember Bill Davis, the Google employee who was killed by a drunk driver on J Road in 2016. So all of these things collectively point toward both the need for greater enforcement as well as for speed control measures. I did want to point out, just to elaborate further on one of the slides that Bill gave earlier, was that we've worked a lot with community partners on TAB. Community cycles has been fantastic, but there's also a group called Cyclists for Community, which not only several years ago did they raise a quarter of a million dollars for Jamestown flood recovery efforts that was collected from cyclists and the community, but in the face of what we perceive to be some resistance on the part of CDOT and others to actually helping to inform motorists about measures that they can take, they took it upon themselves to privately fundraise for a variable message board. And so it's good indication and a good example of what a true public-private partnership can look like, but we need more of it. And so anything that we can ask of this council to be more supportive of those efforts, and also frankly, help us get the word out to CDOT. You know, these are Boulder residents who are being seriously injured and killed. And we've sent a resolution to CDOT calling for stronger enforcement, for non-automated enforcement, for reductions in speed limits across those corridors. And we'd really, really appreciate your support and help in making sure that those measures are viewed and weighed.
Great. Well, just a couple of thoughts. Thank you for all of that. I would bring up bike boulevards again, as I mentioned, just because part of making our intersections safer is giving people safe alternatives. And, you know, Mike, you talked about how a lot of our older streets are wider. And granted, most of the fatalities are not happening on the residential streets, but if there's opportunities to make those, to give those pinch points, you know, so that speeds are slowed and you get good bike alternatives, I think that can really help us accomplish these goals. So I'd like to see that included as part of it. I know it's in the Complete Streets Program, and I know it's one of your focuses, but I'm looking forward to seeing more about that. And then I just, before I mentioned the goals, potential new goals around the Vision Zeros, and so, and maybe below the level of goals in the TMP, we can just also see some additional metrics on these. So in terms of what are our, what are our metrics on these various techniques that we're implementing in terms of the, you know, the leading pedestrian intervals or safe bikeways, or et cetera, et cetera. So there could be more that we have as metrics than we have as official goals in the TMP. And then there are other places doing some really good work on this, like Denver, you know, you mentioned the message boards that they have. Every time I go to Denver these days, I see some new treatment, you know, whether it's a protected bike lane or protected bus lane, or they had a right turn block for cars in downtown. I saw recently that. I thought was an intriguing treatment. So I'd love to see us maybe learn from some of our peers around the region. I know that the Denver Regional Council of Governments is working on convening a Vision Zero kind of collaborative across the area. So I don't know if they've gotten that off the ground yet, but that's a potential alternative to learn from that. And just because I think we could do some more with engineering than we have. I think some of the paint stuff that we've done is great. Signs, I think, only go and get us so far. And I think sometimes when you're able to put concrete on the ground to steer exactly where people can go, that can be more effective. So I'd love to see us focus on that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I timed it just for the length of your snack run.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Natalie Stifler. I'm a Senior Transportation Planner with Go Boulder. I'm going to try to embody my favorite motto tonight, be brief, be bright, and be gone. So I will try to move quickly through this update on the Transit Service Delivery Study. So you will notice there are a few other items in your packet tonight related to the HOP study, the Downtown Boulder Station Study, and the RTD Pass Program Working Group. I'm not going to hit on those tonight, but if you have any questions, feel free to let us know. So I'm going to be providing an update on the service delivery study, and some of this might be a bit of a repeat for folks that have been here longer, but I'll be trying to get everyone up to speed and then presenting some new information. So just a little bit of background, as you know, our current service delivery model relies heavily on RTD. They operate the majority of service within Boulder. We also supplement that service through buy-ups on the Jump and the Bound, operating the HOP service, and other local partnerships. And then our existing model really serves as a multifaceted approach to delivering transit service. But this current service model, as I mentioned, relies heavily on RTD, and that's becoming more of a challenge for us. RTD has limited resources and competing priorities. In 2017, they started drawing down from base bus service funds to pay for FastTrax projects, and those are obviously largely Denver-centric projects. And additionally, Boulder continues to see on an annual basis service cuts related to our base bus service and just overall transit infrastructure investments declining related to stops and station and facilities. The confluence of these factors and the continuing need to provide a high-capacity way of moving people in Boulder means that the city needs to find new service delivery models if we're going to meet our TMP goals. So this study looks at two things. We look at our current service delivery structure and challenges with delivering Boulder's vision for transit, and then we're looking at potential alternative funding, operating, and governance structures that can help us meet our renewed vision for transit goals. So this, the first phase of work that some of you have already heard about, we looked at our renewed vision for transit costs. We looked at our existing transit service, which is costing about $50.4 million a year, and we compared that to our 2035 Transit Service Vision, which is about $117.7 million. So that's about 133% increase in transit service in the long term. And obviously, we would need to come up with a mix of local, regional, and state, and state and federal funding sources to deliver that service. The second part of the Phase One work that we looked at was our return on investment. Here, I'm just providing a quick snapshot of how that 1% sales tax works with RTD. So we pay 0.6% of that 1% for base bus system service and then 0.4% for FastTrax. And as I mentioned, RTD is drawing down on that base bus system funding to pay for FastTrax. So this is relevant to the return on investment because we looked at two, we looked at our return on investment for base service funding, non-FastTrax, and then we looked at it looking at just FastTrax. So our base service return on investment is not so bad. We're getting basically 94, we're covering about 94% of the cost of service that we're getting back from RTD. Our FastTrax picture is a little bit different. So in 2015, we contributed about $9.3 million to FastTrax, and we got about $2 million back in service. Also worth recognizing that we've, RTD contributed about $200 million to US36 infrastructure improvements and the purchase of flotter and flyer buses, and we receive a portion of that benefit. And then in addition to that Phase One return on investment work, we looked at some peer situations. So we looked at peer agencies across the country. The four agencies, two from LA Metro, and one each from Seattle and Washington DC. These are all just examples of local agencies that operate in a bigger regional context. So we were looking at, you know, what can we learn from them with the way that they govern and fund their transit service? So building on this peer research, we've developed this set of governance models. I'm going to go through, this is where we'll spend the bulk of the time. I'm going to go through each of these models and try to give you a brief explanation of what we mean by each of these models. So this first one is pretty straightforward. It's our status quo, maintenance of current service model. The important thing to note here is just that we're going to continue to see a degradation in service if we keep things going the way that they're going. With option two, this is the expansion of our current HOP model and our buy-up model. So, for example, the city could provide the bound and stampede and fund it as a partnership like the HOP with RTD and CU students, and we could continue to look for opportunities to buy up additional service from RTD. As Mike mentioned, that also is a bit of a challenge because RTD is facing some driver hiring issues. And until that issue is resolved, it will be difficult for us to continue to buy up service at the rate that we've been buying it up in the past.
Natalie, a quick question for you. Are those, I've heard about those driver hiring issues. Do you feel like those are specific to RTD? Or if we wanted to hire a whole bunch of drivers, would we have a different success rate?
Right.
Yeah, so I think that there's, there's potential that we could face some issues, too. It's definitely transit industry-wide, but we've seen in smaller agency models, there's, they don't have as big of an issue because there's more flexibility in, in kind of the compensation and benefits package that you can provide, where RTD is just operating in a bigger context where there's less flexibility to do so.
So we could have better luck.
We could, yeah.
And just another wrinkle in all of that is that to have a commercial driver's license is actually quite an asset to have these days, in that you can drive a lot of different vehicles for a lot of different services. And so we're seeing that same CDL issues across service areas. And so as we try and hire maintenance people that operate similar vehicles, we're having that same issue in that the Colorado economy is going along quite well. And so there's a high demand for people with CDL licenses. And so that's affecting RTD, that's affecting the city as we try and hire maintenance staff to drive those types of vehicles, in that there's a lot of work out there.
Okay. So now, looking at option three, we're considering here that the city would be the primary local transit provider. For example, the city would provide all local service, such as the community transit network routes that stay within the city limits. Under this model, we could operate service directly, or we could build upon the HOP model and contract with an operator to provide that service. With option four, we look at the city in Boulder County as a joint provider of local and regional transit service through an intergovernmental agreement. This would be a joint powers authority. This partnership would focus on providing service within Boulder County, so including the Jump and the Dash and possibly new Bus Rapid Transit Service. And then option five, I'm going to pop both of these up. So with option five, this would entail forming a regional transportation authority and would include Boulder County and other cities within Boulder County. So the RTA could act solely as a funding mechanism, or it can both fund and operate transit service, which is why you see 5A and 5B here. Just a little bit clarification on what an RTA is and how this is different from the Joint Powers Authority. So the RTA would be something that we would have to place on the general election ballot for, to go to a vote, and a majority of voters must vote yes for that jurisdiction to become part of the RTA. So each community within the, who were trying to get in the RTA would have to approve the formation of the RTA. The new RTA would provide funding for enhanced transit services, and the funding sources would also have to be approved by voters in a general election. So there's two separate pieces to that, to that voting process. And then this last one is the formation of the RTA, and council had asked us to also look at the model in that we would completely secede from RTD. And so that's what the sixth model is. So each of these models, we're looking, they're all very complex, so we have to look at kind of service scenarios within each of these models and what the funding mechanism would be for each of these models and what, in each of those service scenarios. So that's what we're currently doing. And then this brings us to the criteria. So a few of the key evaluation criteria that we'll be using to evaluate these models are noted here. The ones worth highlighting, I think, are just what are the potential models that can help us deliver a local service and also get us to delivering our regional service and helping us meet our TMP goals? What is the feasibility of implementing each model from a legislative and legal perspective, as well as just the funding piece of it? And then, of course, we're considering a variety of other criteria, such as which best supports implementing shared ride mobility.
supports implementing shared ride mobility options, some of those technology services that we're seeing come online, and then, of course, electrifying our transit fleet. So we wanted to provide a brief snapshot of the project timeline and the progress we've made to date. The timeline highlights our key deliverables from the work that's been completed in Phase One and Phase Two, and that's been shared with you tonight. Also want to note that we've been working with representatives from Boulder County at both the technical and policy level, and they have played an essential role in developing the service models and the evaluation criteria. And then based on your feedback tonight, we will refine the range of potential options for further study and will be back later in 2018 to update you on progress related to that refinement and recommendation of a, of a service model. So here, just a few key takeaways from the information that I've shared tonight and just to remind you as we're headed into this question. Does council support the proposed governance options and evaluation criteria for the service study?
Maybe you want to go back to the criteria?
Yeah. So.
Criteria, probably better.
Okay.
So this is all rather complicated, getting late at night. I will say that there's a couple of us that serve on this committee, and I'll just say a lot of thought went into the governance models that are worth checking out, and there are significant trade-offs amongst all the choices. I wouldn't say there's an obvious best choice, just given all the trade-offs with funding levels and, and control and to set up an RTA is really complicated. Anyhow, but really bright people are looking into this. So I'll just say, a lot of thought went into honing down those six options. Do people have thoughts on the criteria?
I mean, they're good. I mean, yeah, I mean, this is incredibly complicated. Those look like the right criteria. I guess the one thing I'm, I'm missing is the, the interest of partners, right? So if we're gonna do an RTA that's county-wide or much of the county, we have to first make sure that those other municipalities are interested, right? Sounds like the county is definitely worth exploring these things with us, but whether we'd go to an RTA, whether we'd consider that seriously would be based in a large part on whether, you know, Louisville, Longmont, et cetera, would be interested in, in working together, I imagine. So that's the only thing I'm seeing missing here.
Yeah, and we have definitely discussed that as a group and, and we're just trying to figure out the right timing. We didn't want to bring them in too early. So once we, I think, refine our options, we'll start to have those broader conversations.
Sorry. The, I was just asking if the university has been part of these, or thought about as being part of these discussions as well?
Yes, they, I failed to mention them. They have been a part of the technical and policy steering committees, so they're also involved in the conversation. They kind of teeter that line of being a service provider and also being a customer to RTD. And so we've, we've definitely had them involved in the discussion and I think they're still trying to figure out how they fit in and we are too. Yeah.
Thank you. And they're even in the audience. David? I think it's worth noting that as the statewide transportation funding conversation happens, the Metro Mayor's Caucus and then subsets were all looking at RTAs to see, is that a better way to just fund everybody's transportation needs on the front range or not? But it's such a complicated model. But anyhow, a lot of people are having those conversations.
It's complicated, but at the same time, it seems like we're just giving so much money for depreciating service or lessening service, whatever the word would be. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's complicated to establish.
Well, thank you all for your time and appreciate you sticking around for an extra half an hour.
If you guys want more jokes, let me know. We'll let you know so you can go find someone to tell one.
Going back into the office, yeah. I have to deposit my new coat.